Coming late. He's coming late.
Well, really, I was surprised.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. This meeting of the Lake Osego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Linder, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Counselor Afghan.
Here.
Counselor Winland will be joining us. Counselor Verdic.
Here.
Counselor Mbo.
Yeah.
Counselor Raffid's excuse and Counselor Corrigan.
Here.
Thank you very much. Now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're going to start out tonight with a presentation from our friends at Metro. They are updating the Regional Garbage and Recycling System Facilities Plan. Marta McGuire, who is the Waste Prevention Director, Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Director, and then Luis Sandoval, Principal Planner with Metro, are here to present. We really appreciate both of you taking the time to be here and share this information with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counselors. Thank you so much for having us here today. Again, my name is Dr. Marta McGuire. I am Metro's Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Director, and I have here with me Luis Sandoval, who's a Principal Planner at Metro. We are excited to share the work that we've been doing on the development of a system facilities plan, and I want to just start if we go to the next slide. Five years ago, Metro Council adopted the 2030 Regional Waste Plan, which is an ambitious plan for managing the region's reuse, recycling and garbage system with the key priorities that are listed here. We partner with your community to move this work forward, and today we are here to discuss one of the key priorities of the plan focused on ensuring equitable and affordable services for everyone. To address this priority, Metro has been working on the Regional System Facilities Plan, which takes a holistic view of the regional waste system, addressing longstanding gaps in facilities and services. And just to give you a little bit of context of our current state, a good example is the Metro South Transport Station, which is a public transportation operated by Metro. It opened in April 1983, and it was originally designed, I did do the math, I think I was in kindergarten when this facility opened. It was originally designed to host an incinerator and was expected to handle about 800 tons of waste every day. Fast forward to today, Metro South processes more than 300,000 tons annually of waste, with many days over 1,000 tons, and the challenges to this site are daily, and we do our best at operating an overburdened facility in a safe and efficient manner. However, to keep valuable resources out of the landfill, we need more space to separate out materials for reuse and recycling and to ensure safety, including traffic flow, so redevelopment of the site is needed. It's just one example of how, over the last 40 years, the garbage and recycling needs of the region have changed. The garbage and recycling system facility gaps are experienced differently through people throughout the region, and the current distribution of facilities means that some people have access to items for recycling and disposal, such as mattresses or large furniture or household hazardous waste, while others do not. I know we recently had an event in Lake Osiego this past weekend where we had more than 400 residents come, and we were almost not able to meet that demand, where some folks had to go to Metro South, so it just shows the level of need that is out there. If we go to the next slide, we also know that we live in a place where people care about the environment and are willing to spend more time and money to keep valuable resources out of the landfill. The Household Hazardous Waste Event that we had is an example. Another example is here, which is of a local recycling event that was hosted by James Recycling in September. One of our staff members attended this and captured this shot. People waited in line for more than half an hour to recycle items that they couldn't recycle at the curb and paid $3 a bag, and you can see that many people have more than one bag with them. And this is just one example of the values in our region in practice. Next slide. So to address the aging system, Metro Council directed us to complete a system facilities plan to take a holistic look at the region's facilities and identify investments that are needed over the next two decades. This will be a 20-year vision to provide a roadmap. It's a concept plan to identify those investments for the region to pursue, essentially a blueprint to set direction, and any proposed investments will have a more detailed implementation plan in many decision points along the way. It also calls out more areas for study and analysis. Next slide. Over the last 18 months, Metro engaged with local government, industry, community and tribal governments across the region to develop this plan. We also hosted an international symposium with experts from around the globe. We engaged Metro Council to develop the set of investments that are included in the draft plan. Essentially, each phase that is shown here built a chapter of the plan through an iterative process, starting with the values and outcomes, and we are now here with a draft plan. You can see the many touchpoints that we've had along the way. I think Mayor Buck has got to see this presentation maybe three times now in our touchpoints out to local governments. Next slide. You can think of the plan like a project roadmap. Here you can see an outline of all the chapters in the plan, and today we will provide a brief overview of the investment strategy and the financing approach, and with that, I will turn it over to Luis.
Thank you, Marta. Good evening, Counselors. For the record, again, my name is Luis Sandoval. I am a planner with Metro. I think I will start with this slide that shows, gives an overview of what we did in the project in each of the first three phases of the plan. After establishing guiding values and outcomes, the project used a combination of engagement activities and technical analysis to identify facility gaps in the regions reuse, recycling and garbage system. Three of the key areas in which we found gaps were in facilities for residential customers, for garbage and recycling collection companies, and for reuse organizations. For residential customers, we found gaps in areas like Washington County and East Moldova County, where residents lack drop-off locations for recyclables, hazardous waste and large reusable items. For garbage and recycling companies, we found that they face challenges related to access, costs, and disaster resilience for materials like food waste, yard debris and garbage. And then in the reuse and repair sector, nonprofits and businesses expressed the need for more warehousing space for sorting, storing, cleaning and doing minor repairs to items, along with consistent funding to enhance collection and distribution of used items. At the last fall's symposium, we presented four scenarios for project partners to consider. These scenarios outline ways in which Metro could fill the gaps in the system, and they are shown a little bit on the right side of the slide. After the symposium and getting feedback from Metro Council, we heard strong support for the distributed scenario. This approach focuses on creating smaller facilities throughout the region to improve access to services. Then we conducted a survey after the symposium, and the results showed that people appreciated elements from other, they favor the distributed scenario, but they liked elements from the other scenarios as well, including more support for reuse organizations and businesses and improving safety and efficiencies at existing facilities. The benefits of the preferred scenario elements are greater access to services, increased reuse and recycling rates, better handling of hazardous and hard-to-recycle materials, and opportunities for public-private partnerships. Now, the draft plan that we have now aims to enhance facilities for the public and for commercial haulers, as well as for food waste processing, and to support reuse and repair organizations over the next 20 years. The draft plan has four key investment areas, as shown here: community drop-off depots, reuse and repair, organics and commercial transfer stations. I'm going to go through each one of these areas in a little bit more detail, but of course, the draft plan has the more detailed version of what I'm able to cover today. The vision for community drop-off depots is to fill gaps that were identified for residents and small businesses. We call these, usually refer to them as self-haul customers, including providing more locations across the region to drop off items for reuse, recycling, hazardous waste and self-haul garbage, all in one place. These facilities would be designed for public customers driving cars and small trucks, separate from commercial haulers. The facilities would also be designed to recover more materials for reuse, recycling and composting, instead of sending garbage to landfills. I moved too quickly to the next slide. This is an example of a community drop-off depot in Burnaby, British Columbia, Canada, and it's a self-haul facility. It's called an eco-center. And then on this next slide, you can see a map of the proposed, the approximate locations of the six proposed community depots in the draft plan. And then you can also see some of the modeling estimates for driving times, waste reduction, and the number of people that would be served at these facilities as compared to the baseline today. For reuse and repair, the plan includes investments in two new facilities, a reuse warehouse and a reuse mall. Both projects would be planned and implemented in partnership with reuse organizations and businesses. And then the draft plan also includes a third investment in this area, which is a sustainable reuse funding program that would support organizations and businesses in recovering more materials for reuse. Now, in the organics area, the draft plan focuses on food waste, because food represents the single largest component of what the region sends to landfills every year, and is also a significant contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. In the realm of food waste, the Metro Central Transfer Station in Portland plays a crucial role in transferring and pre-processing food waste before it reaches an end market. This facility handles around 70% of the region's business food waste. For Metro, it is critical to maintain a contamination-free system to produce high-quality compost and avoid environmental health and risk to people. To improve the transfer and processing capacity for organics in the region, Metro will continue to invest in Metro Central as a regional hub for receiving residential and commercial organics from haulers. And then the other element in the organics area that is proposed in the draft plan is for Metro to develop public-private partnerships to support additional organics hubs in areas of the region where there are the greatest gaps. Now, moving on to the commercial transfer stations area, in this area, we heard Metro Council, that Metro Council has expressed support for repurposing over time the two Metro Commercial Transfer Stations, Metro Central and Metro South, to focus on providing the services that are more challenging to provide for the private sector, including self-haul services and organics transfer. Because the plan is proposing to convert Metro South to a community drop-off depot, this would create a service gap for commercial haulers in the southern part of the region. To fill this gap, Metro would take a phased approach and seek to authorize a new private transfer station that can provide services to commercial haulers before pursuing a public-private partnership to build a new facility in the southern part of the region. There are also two important areas in the plan that need more time for research, assessment and discussion. These are wet waste tonnage flow and private facility regulation. The plan includes two actions in this area. First is to study the impact of lowering or removing Metro's wet waste tonnage guarantee, as well as conducting an evaluation of the current program that allocates wet waste to private facilities. The second proposed action is to assess options for private facility regulation to best serve the public interest. These actions are discussed in more detail in the plan and would begin when the plan is adopted by Metro Council. And we wanted to show you this slide, which gives a visual overview of the investments proposed in the draft plan, and it also summarizes some of the benefits that the proposed investments would bring about. Note that the facilities outlined with a gray circle dashed line on the map do not have a specific location determined yet. The proposed investments are estimated to cost about $273 million over the 20-year implementation period in today's dollars. For comparison, the original scenarios that the project team presented back in last fall at the symposium ranged from $280 million to more than $800 million. The investments in the draft plan would be financed through revenue bonds with debt paid off over 20 years. The estimated increase in the garbage bill for a typical single-family household in the region over the next two decades, as a result of the proposed investments, would be $1.50 to $2 per month, on average, in today's dollars. This stays within what we heard people would be willing to pay for increased services after last fall's symposium. It is also important to note again that this is a 20-year vision plan, as Marta mentioned, and so the specific costs and timing of each project will be determined in Metro's annual budgeting process. The annual budget development and fee-setting process will be guided by Metro Council's solid waste fee policy with input from the Regional Waste Advisory Committee. And then we have the draft plan out for public comment, and there are two ways to provide feedback on the draft plan. One is to leave a public comment. There's an online form, email, phone, and then there's a short survey that people can take that focuses on specific areas of the plan. Both opportunities have been open since October 1st, beginning of October, and then they will be open until tomorrow, November 6th. And then the input that we received will help shape the final plan to be considered for adoption by Metro Council in December, and then set the foundation for future work to make the plan a reality. That concludes our presentation. Then we have some questions for you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Dr. McGuire, we really appreciate it. Colleagues, if you have any questions, let me know. I also want to thank Ms. Watson for putting together a good staff report on kind of how this plan impacts our local community here, and clearly, we're closest to, you know, the Metro South Station. Many residents, you know, use that for those purposes, hazardous waste, you know, removal and self-haul and all of that. So repurposing that facility, you know, would increase access for Lake Osiego residents to have, you know, removing the commercial side of it would be a better experience and adding additional services there. Could you help us understand a little bit better, so of the of the new investments Metro was planning on making, some of those are, you know, like repurposing Metro South, and it sounds like enhancing Metro Central. Are there new, aside from those two properties, are there are there locations that have, the map was quick, but are there other locations that have been decided on for other investments, or is that all yet to come?
That's a great question. So there are two where Metro currently owns property. One is property that was purchased in Cornelius. It was originally purchased, I want to say four or five years ago, with the intent to develop a full-scale transfer station, and at that time, there was also the question of, wait a second, we need to take a holistic look at the system before we decide what we're going to do. So we own that property. And then the RID Deployment Center, which houses our cleanup crews that clean up dumped garbage located in southeast Portland, is another site. We would look at housing a smaller depot to collect materials, as that's another gap area in the system. So the idea of the phasing was starting with the properties that we currently own, and then working with jurisdictions to find other sites within their communities that may be ideal to house these for the remaining depots.
And then, so for, if Metro South was repurposed, you look for the private market to provide some other site for hauling, so they would have to find that.
It's a two-faced approach, so the idea, and this is interesting, because at the same time, when they were looking at building a Metro West in Cornelius, they were also looking at the redevelopment of South, because it, as I noted, it's 40 years old. If you've ever gone through South, you can kind of experience what they're able to accomplish in such a tight space. So they were also looking at property of South. So the intention is that Metro South becomes that community depot, and then we would take a phased approach. First, seek any private interest to develop a commercial transfer station, and then if not, then we would look at some type of partnership to build a public station. So the intent is to seek private interests first, but if that fails, then we would build a public station.
And when you talk about, you know, regulating the private facilities in the way that best serves the public interest, are you talking about, you know, monitoring their rates, something that's, okay?
That's a, I mean, that's a great, yes. And so if you look at the supporting actions, and I know we moved through that quickly, Metro Council operates as the solid waste authority for the system, and as a part of that, we allocate wet waste, which is essentially garbage, to different transfer stations in the region. That has gone through different approaches over time. Currently, Metro retains 40% of the wet waste that is allocated to our two private transfer stations, and the remaining tonnage is, 30% is allocated on an equal basis, and then the other 30%, they have to meet certain goals in order to get that percentage. Council is interested in looking at that wet waste allocation program as a part of the system facilities plan implementation, and at the same time, as they look at, looking at the wet waste allocation program, also evaluating private rate regulation. Those are two different levers that Metro has within the system to monitor rates and services, and they understand the connectedness of those two, so that would be a part of implementation. I know we've heard over the last year, input from governments around rate regulation. Metro has the authority to regulate rates at private transfer stations, but does not utilize that authority now. And so the council is really interested in looking at our role in the system, and if we were to choose a different role, what regulatory level will be put in place to ensure that there are consistent rates across the region for like services?
Is it true that the, it seems like the transfer stations set their rates now based on Metro's rates?
Yeah, yes. I'm part of the goal-based tonnage allocation program that I mentioned is meeting Metro's rates, so it essentially serves as a benchmark for the rates in the region. To get tonnage for the goal-based portion of that allocation, they have to meet Metro rates, and most of the transfer stations in the region do meet our rate.
Oh, okay.
More recently, so the program has evolved, and so the differences between Metro rates and private transfer stations have gotten closer in the last.
But there are some differences.
Three, four years, yeah. It's still a voluntary program, right? They're not required to use Metro's rates to set their own rates, but the tonnage allocations program encourages, incentivizes them to do so, because they get extra tonnage. So it's a voluntary tool.
Right. Well, of course, the narrative that we get from the haulers, it's Metro's rate that is the, aside from, you know, their inflation-based operational, you know, cost increases and investments that they need to make to continue operating, it's that Metro tonnage rate, you know, when it increases that they come to us.
Yeah, we've heard that. I think a good kind of point is to look. I think a good kind of point is to look at the composition of costs. Roughly 70% of costs for curbside collection is collection itself, and 30% is transfer and disposal. So Metro sets rates at the regional level, and local governments, there is a variety of ways that local governments set curbside collection rates, and there are differences on what communities charge based on their franchise agreements, based on what type of services they may be providing. There are differences. And we do have copies both of the private transfer station rates as well as city and county rates as a reference point that we are happy to share with you. We've been asked for that information in other conversations that we've had in the system facilities plan, so we have that at the ready, which is helpful information.
It is good information. And one additional question about the, and I've asked this in other times that you've presented this great presentation, which just gets better every time. The Recycling Modernization Act also calls for the placement of depots, community depots, which is great, except those, as I understand, will be paid for by the producers of things. So is there a way to coordinate this regional plan with the modernization plan so that the communities are not paying for depots and then also the RMAs?
We have a team of staff that are working on implementation of the Recycling Modernization Act, participating on the advisory committees as well as with the development of plans. So we've been, in the development of the system facilities plan, we've been ensuring that that is aligning with how the Recycling Modernization Act is rolling out. The differences are the Recycling Modernization Act depots are primarily for packaging materials. So I think they're depots with a tiny D. And the community depots that we're talking about are middle-sized. They're taking household hazardous waste. They're taking self-haul garbage. They're taking large items and furnitures, and those things aren't really covered by the RMA depot. Certainly, we want them to be coordinated, so we're being efficient and not minimizing costs. One of the things that we have heard in the local conversations that we've had around the mid-sized depots is 20 minutes is too far. And so what are the considerations of looking at both the smaller-sized depots that maybe there's a middle, medium-sized, you know, between the tiny D and the medium D, another size depot that can provide additional spaces for folks to recycle materials at existing facilities if they wanted to opt in and provide some expanded options? So we're also looking at how we might further leverage both the Recycling Modernization Act and existing facilities that might be interested in offering not everything, but more services than they currently provide. What we've learned the most in talking to communities throughout the country and globe is convenience is most important. And one way doesn't work for everyone, so we need to offer multiple options, whether it be a one-stop shop or curbside collection, or the mobile pop-up collection event. So it needs to be multiple choice options for folks to pursue. So we're really looking at that diversity, but also keeping in mind efficiency and cost.
No, that's great. Certainly for residents, I mean, the convenience factor, that's why the curbside programs are so great. We recently had a conversation here in LO about expanding our curbside program to include some of these, you know, difficult-to-recycle items. But those programs are expensive, you know, for people to use, and they're not affordable to every household. And so having, you know, we used to have that Far West Fibers depot down in the foothills area that people loved, you know, to take. They just had even too much to fit into the curbside bin. And then when that went away, we were kind of reliant on some private locations, and those, you know, from time to time have stopped collecting, you know, different goods. And so we appreciate hearing this plan that will provide consistent, you know, and stable locations for folks to take items to that are more convenient, and hopefully paired with the RMA will provide just a broader suite of more affordable options all around, you know, for folks. And, yeah. Great. Colleagues, any? Okay, well, both of you, oh, it's Counselor Afgham.
Thank you. Couple of comments and couple of questions. First of all, I've been going to Metro South for over 30 years and never, ever, never, ever had less-than-perfect experience there. Even when recently you had the operating contract with a different contractor, even at that time, it was perfect. So all the issues you were talking about, they must be behind the curtains.
I will share that with our superintendent, so we'll be very pleased to hear that.
I love recycling. The more recycling, the better. So the couple of questions that I'm going to ask, it's not meant to be pushing back, it's meant to understand the whole picture. When we talk about the commercial waste going someplace else, as a homeowner that I may have a small remodeling or some waste that I need to go take to the transfer station, do I now have to go to someplace else, or is that just for the commercial contracts?
That's a great question. So we refer to commercial as the en route collection trucks that you see come and pick up your garbage at the curb. And what you just described, we would qualify as self-haul. So that would be anywhere from somebody cleaning out their garage to a contractor that was doing some type of construction work or cleanup of a site and has a pickup truck and a trailer to drop off stuff. Those would qualify as self-haul. And so they would be able to go to the community depots that we just described.
The $1.50 to $2 a month increase that we were talking about, that's very specific for the new project locations. Now, if the commercial waste are going to go someplace else and they are five miles further, does that impact the monthly cost of the service? So there would be two different increase. Am I making sense?
Well, yes, it depends where the new facility moves, right? For some jurisdictions, it will be less, and for some more, yeah. So those are not accounted for in the $1.50 to $2. That would be, you made me start thinking, how could we incorporate that? But that would be very difficult, too.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we see the whole picture, but more recycling, more recycling, more recycling. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, Dr. McGuire, Mr. Sandoval, thank you again very much for being here, taking the time. Great presentation. Thank you. Well, we have a new sheriff, not really, city prosecutor, kind of like a sheriff. She's our sheriff. Stephanie Eames and City Attorney Osnek is going to introduce her to us.
Thank you so much, Mayor Buck and City Council, for allowing me to introduce the city's new prosecutor to you and the public. For the past 15 years, the city contracted for its prosecution services Sheila Montag, who is also in the audience and probably embarrassed that I'm calling her out, but I need to because she's been the city's administrative assistant for this program throughout those 15 years, and her diligent work has been key to the stability of the program. When the city's longtime contractor, who you all may remember, Jerry Seeburger, when he ended his service, I conducted a comprehensive review of the prosecution program. My vision for our program is one that focuses on restorative justice based on the community's values while holding offenders accountable and protecting victims' rights. Stephanie Eames, who's here at the council table, is a Lake Oswego resident, and she shares my vision. I had the honor of serving alongside Ms. Eames when we were both deputy district attorneys in Multnomah County, and I'm pleased to report that she agreed to serve in this important role and has been working actually here for several months already. So I'll have Stephanie introduce herself, and I really appreciate you all giving me the time to make this happen. Thank you.
Osnek.
Thank you, Ellen, for that generous introduction. Thank you, Mayor, for having me. Thank you, council members. I am Stephanie Eames, and it is a real pleasure to meet you. We're going on our, my family, I'll just tell you a little briefly about my background, but I invite you to contact me at any point, and we'll have a walking date around Lake Oswego and get to know each other more. My family consists of me, my husband, John. We've been married for 22 years. We have four daughters, and together, the six of us are high utilizers of everything Lake Oswego has to offer. We are coming up on our 10-year anniversary of being residents here, homeowners. My husband, John, runs his business. He's in government affairs down here in the old Waluga Lodge building on Second. We are tennis players at the tennis center. We use the parks. Our dog loves the walking paths. We're on the bike trails. The point is, we love it here. And I, because of that, am so privileged and honored to be able to work for the city attorney's office in this prosecutor position. Excuse me. I have a wealth of experience prosecuting cases in Portland, and I think this municipal court is real different than the big city. And it fits my interests. It fits my education, fits my background. I think what Ellen's talking about, restorative justice, I won't get into all of it now, but this, my passion here is working to maintain the high livability that we have in Lake Oswego and the public safety, the community justice aspect. My passion is helping victims feel seen, heard, and understand their very important rights that the Oregon Constitution and statutes allow them. My other passion here is using the trauma-informed lens to see this whole process. It's not, in my opinion, about throwing everybody in jail. In the old days, when we were baby attorneys back in 2001, 2002, there was this idea, I think that doesn't really fit, Lake Oswego doesn't really fit me. I love to approach prosecution with a mindset and the lens of an offender needs to be held accountable, but also we need a way that with our community's interests in offering rehabilitation and offering an opportunity to deter future interest in crimes. And I think that's the holistic take. That's bringing the victim together, that's bringing the offender together, and that's having public interest in mind. Healing, kind of in a way. I don't hear a lot of prosecutors talk about the idea of healing, but I think the idea of restorative justice is that. And I'm so honored that I get to do that in my own community with my people, leaders such as you, with our agencies that work hard, the police, our court administration, all the other agencies we work with. So I am, to say I'm excited would be an understatement. I'm holding myself back. I'm delighted. I'm excited. I'm proud, and I'm honored and truly humbled. And I promise you and the city and our community to do my best every day to help effectuate community justice in its real human sense here for the city.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. It's so great to have you here. I mean, you've been a member of our community, but now new to this position, and we place so much trust in everyone that's involved in the court process, and including, of course, in the city prosecutor, and to have someone of your experience and also your values. And as a member of our community in that role means a lot to us. And to hear your approach, you know, both to, you know, folks that come into the municipal court, I mean, are on all sides, are in very difficult times in their lives, and to approach all sides with compassion, both the offenders and then taking good care of the victims, I think in the past has been something that we've missed a little bit. And so with, you know, Ms. Osnek's direction, and of course, with new judge, and yourself, I'm very hopeful to see those changes implemented so we have that good communication going out of the municipal court system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great to meet you. We appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight.
Please don't be strangers. We're in court on Wednesdays, and I'm here all Wednesday morning, and I'd love to get to know you more. Thanks again for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
Although if you would like to be strangers to the criminal justice.
That would be okay.
That would be okay.
No, 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 no. Thank you. Good night. Thank you, Ellen.
Well, November is Native American Heritage Month, which provides a meaningful opportunity to celebrate the diversity and contributions of American Indian, Alaska Native, Native Hawaiian, and Island communities, while also honoring Indigenous veterans who have bravely served in defense of our nation. We proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Lake Oswego. We invite all residents to join in celebrating the cultures, resilience, and contributions of Indigenous communities, and to engage in reflection, education, and dialogue as we commit to honoring these remarkable Americans every month. Together, we build a future grounded in mutual respect, inclusivity, and equity for all residents. The proclamation in its entirety will be posted to the city's website. And now we have our time on the agenda for public comment. Is there anyone who has signed up for a public comment, Ms. Linder? No, okay. Is there anyone here who'd like to provide public comment for something that's not on the agenda? Okay. All right, then, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have item 6.1, which is approval of the meeting minutes from July 16, July 30, September 3, September 17, and October 1. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Counselor Corrigan, seconded by Counselor Verdic. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, when you opposed. All right, motion passes 6-0. All right, next on the agenda is item 8.1. This is a public hearing, an ordinance 2948. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lake Oswego adopting amendments relating to the stormwater management code and related chapters and articles and adopting findings. We are going to start with a review of the hearing procedure by Ms. Osnek.
Thank you, Mayor Buck, Council. This public hearing involves a legislative policy decision, which is in with the sound discretion of the city council. This particular legislative decision also has to comply with the federal storm water management, which Ms. Johnson will describe for you all. Testimony may be received by the council. 10 minutes for representatives of recognized neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations, and five minutes per individual.
And I just stated, I, when I, I'm sorry, when I read that title, I said, and adopting findings, but we're not going to adopt the findings until, we'll just tentatively adopt, right, and then come back.
That's correct. You have the findings in your packet, but per usual, you all will review those in support of your legislative decision, and if you tentatively approve them, we'll come back for final adoption.
Okay. Wonderful. Thanks, Ms. Osnek. Sonia Johnson, Ms. Johnson, welcome. Good to have you here. We're going to start with your staff report.
All right. Thank you so much for letting me talk to you on this great day. I'm looking behind you, and the tree colors are just popping against the blue sky there, the cloudy sky. So I've been kind of mesmerized by them this afternoon. I'm here to talk to you about some stormwater code amendments that we're putting forth because we have a couple of regulatory drivers. We have a newly, well, somewhat newly reissued MS4 permit, which has to do with stormwater. We had some TMDLs revised in the last eight, nine years. One was in Mercury in 2019. Temperature TMDL will be updated in January 2025, and we will have to revise plans accordingly by 2026. We also received an underground injection control permit. Those are dry wells, infiltration trenches, infiltration galleries, that I'm sure you've seen go in your neighborhoods. And we are updating our stormwater management manual to comply with the 2021 MS4 permit. So in order to do all of that stuff, we decided we might as well update the code so that it also complies with the MS4 permit, and then we don't have any kind of conflicts by doing first the manual, then the permit, and with all the other things that are coming into play. Other than Chapter 38 and Chapter 52, which is the stormwater requirements and erosion and sediment control chapters, the changes fall into a couple of buckets. One is language updates. We're moving from stormwater system instead of storm sewer system. We don't want people to think of our stormwater system as a sewer, because then they can dump, they feel they can dump things in it, it'll get treated, not a big deal, and it really isn't. It goes straight into our streams. Another one is we had requirements in various chapters. They kind of said, they all said the same thing, but we moved all of that into just the primacy chapter. So if Chapter 50 referred to erosion and sediment control, we just said, refer to Chapter 52, which is the erosion and sediment control, so that we don't have any conflicts. Again, somebody who's reading the code, they might say, well, in this chapter it says this, and this chapter it says that, because people updated different chapters at different times. So we're just trying to make things clear and concise so that there isn't any kind of misunderstandings. Another is the escalating enforcement piece, which is required by our MS4 permit. That means that we give notice, we give warnings, we maybe issue a citation, maybe we do a stop-work order. We have to keep ratcheting it up until we finally get compliance, however that may look for the person who's coming crossways with the code. And the fourth bucket is definitions. Again, for clarification, we want the definition in Chapter 42 to be as similar as possible to the definition for the same term in Chapter 38. Now, various, for technical reasons, definitions can be a little bit different, but for the most part, we want them to be similar or exactly the same. And that's, so those are the four buckets that most of these changes fall into. They're administrative in nature. I'm going to kind of go through quickly the different chapters and articles in 38, because it has three different places where we've changed a lot of stuff. In Chapter 3824, which talks about the surface water utility, we've updated the language. We have identified the components of our surface water utility. It includes the natural waterways and our public stormwater system. That is different from most jurisdictions. A lot of jurisdictions do not include the natural waterways within their surface water system. It's just that belt and suspenders, the pipes, the catch bases, the manholes, and that's what they call the public stormwater system. And here, we call it a surface water utility system. There was a reference in this article regarding catch basin maintenance that I think was put in when we didn't have a stormwater code. We didn't have Article 3825. And so we deleted that reference because it's covered now by 3825. And then we added the ability to adopt a stormwater master plan. And then we added objectives to what that master plan should include, which are, we need to identify deficiencies, we need to prioritize projects. It's similar to kind of what we're doing already with the capital improvement project, but it's more on a citywide, and it's a citywide plan, and it takes into account hydraulics and hydrology. And so it is a very technical document. But we have something that is similar called the Clean Streams Program. And we wanted to, most people call it a stormwater master plan, so that's why we put it in there. Chapter 38, or Article 3825, we're updating language in there. We're removing DEQ program, and we're instead referring people to the DEQ program. We were, we had items in there, putting in requirements for the underground injection control program. And rather than try to keep up with what DEQ is actually requiring for their programs, we're just referring people to the DEQ program itself. We're removing the city from that responsibility. We had a couple of items in there on erosion control. And again, now we're just referring to that Chapter 52, you know, for erosion control, please see Chapter 52. We added variance criteria. So if a developer has, or a business has trouble complying with the requirements, they can apply for a variance, and they can say, "This is why I need the variance. This is the unique characteristics of my site." And then we'll look at that on a technical basis and determine what kind of variance we can do there. It's similar to the variance that Chapter 50 Development and Planning already do. We removed outdated programs, programs that we have in the article, but we're under the, we added them because we thought, "Well, in the future, we might want to use those." The ability to transfer private stormwater facilities to the public system. We have since determined that we don't want to take on private stormwater facilities because of, many times, there's a lot of updating and work that needs to be done on those facilities by the time they decide to transfer them. And so we removed those kinds of opportunities. We moved the enforcement piece of Article 3825 to Article 3826, where all the other enforcement is for Chapter 38. Now, all of the enforcement is in one piece of Chapter 38, rather than having it spread out amongst different areas. And we added definitions that seemed necessary in order for people to really understand what we're talking about within the code. Article 3826, which is the violation piece, we updated language again. We provide the same enforcement for different code violations, so that if somebody has an illicit discharge, it's going to be the same enforcement, whether it's a wastewater or it's a stormwater. We added the ability to refuse access to the public system for extreme circumstances if we have somebody who is dumping hazardous waste into our streams. We have the ability to plug the pipe and not allow them to do that. That's what that's about. Chapter 42 is, they referenced the stormwater regulations, and so we said, "refer to Article 3825." We clarified that public improvements need to be in the right of way or in an easement. Currently, we have pieces of our public system in people's backyards, and we really don't want to have that happen if at all possible. We added a piece on the documents that drive street design, so the transportation system plan, the engineering design standards, the engineering detail drawings. And we clarified that modifications to the Chapter 42 need to follow the variance procedure and engineering design standards, which already exist. Chapter 45, which is the building code, we updated language again. We clarified that groundwater cannot be sent to stormwater treatment facilities. Previously, we were putting in stormwater planters, and I'm sure you've seen these, where they are, the top of the soil is three or four feet from the top of the planter. And they did that because they tied the foundation drains of the house, which was collecting groundwater. They tied those foundation drains into the stormwater facility. In order to make the slopes work, they had to drop the facility way down. That becomes a public safety issue. And so what we are requiring is that the groundwater, you cannot send it to that planter. You can connect downstream from the planter, down gradient from the planter, so you're still connecting into the public system if you care to. But you cannot try to put it into our storm, into the stormwater treatment facilities, if that makes sense. We also clarified that a DEQ 1200C permit, which is an erosion control permit of the state, must be obtained for an acre or more of disturbance. Previously, in the code, they had five acres, and it's actually one acre for the 1200C. Building requires a geotechnical report, given certain conditions, certain slope stabilities, weak soils, landslide risks, and so does the stormwater chapter. And so what we did was we, and the stormwater management manual also requires a geotechnical report. So we looked at what the building requires, what the stormwater requirements are, and we merged those requirements so that building, or so that the developer only needs to provide the city with one report, as opposed to two reports, so they can hit all of the different requirements. So it's a streamlining for the developers, and hopefully it'll result in some cost deficiencies. And then we clarified the primacy, who has primacy for stormwater facilities. If a project does not meet the stormwater thresholds, which is 1,000 square feet of new impervious area, or 3,000 square feet of new or replaced impervious area, if it does not meet those thresholds, it's a, building takes primacy for requiring stormwater facilities. If it meets and exceeds those thresholds, then engineering would take primacy for the requiring stormwater facilities. And so we clarified that. Chapter 52 had a lot of changes, again, because it's tied so much into stormwater. Chapter 52 is the erosion and sediment control. We updated language. We, again, removed those DEQ program requirements and said, "See the DEQ program requirements if you have an acre or more of disturbance." If it's under an acre, then it's a city erosion control permit. We clarified what we require in an erosion control plan. We need a narrative, and we need a site plan. The narrative says what kind of erosion controls are needed, are going to be used. And then the plan shows those locations. The narrative would also say, "How are you going to stabilize the soil at the end?" Which is not shown on the site plan, but it's something that we would want to know so that when we go out there at the end, we'll, we can see what was done, and we don't have to ask what they did. We clarified the inspection requirements, which basically says, the permit required, currently, the erosion control permit requires the city to come out three times to a project, to every project. Once at the beginning, to make sure that the erosion controls are properly installed. Once when they do the concrete pour for the foundation, to make sure that the concrete washout container is there and doesn't result in concrete being poured into our system. And then the last one is the final inspection, where we go out there and we look at their stormwater facility, and we make sure that the soils are stabilized. Previously, sometimes those inspections weren't being called. And so this allows us to make sure that people understand they need to call and schedule those inspections for the city to come out. We updated the enforcement to match the stormwater enforcement, because, again, erosion and sediment control and stormwater are so closely tied together. And then we added definitions, because there were very few definitions, and we wanted to make sure that people understood what we meant when we said, "an erosion and sediment control." What is that? Or what is landscaping, that kind of a thing? In Chapter 50, which is the development code change, we didn't make very many changes. We updated language, and where it would say the actual stormwater requirements, we had it refer back to 3825, to the stormwater chapter. And then in the other chapters, 37, 39, 40, 55, which you can see the names of them up there, we basically updated language. So stormwater system instead of stormwater sewer system, stormwater instead of stormwater runoff. Stormwater runoff is actually redundant. You either use stormwater or you use runoff, depending on your usage. And the recommendation from staff is that we adopt ordinance 2948 and come back with findings at the next meeting.
Let me see first. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Presentation. Is there anyone here who, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here, is there anyone here to testify on this? Okay. Then we're going to close the public hearing. We'll have questions. Anyone have any questions? I want to thank you first for the, this is so much work, and really intricate, and seemingly, to me, very complicated.
I hope you didn't fall asleep during it.
No, no. But it was, you've, I mean, just a large body of work that you spent a lot of time working through these very details. So thank you very much, and congratulations to you on getting this massive project done and updated and streamlined. It's very, it's great work. Okay. Counsel Windlet.
I ditto that, and I'm glad somebody is paying attention to all this, and the level of detail that you are. It's very appreciated. I've got a question, a couple of questions. Overall, these changes, is it going to, there's some streamlining, there's some new additions, some changes, whatever. Will the community understand this? Will it be better for them? I mean, is this going to streamline our whole process, or is it making it more complicated to get through a project? And do you think this has, with all the changes that are made, do you think it will reduce, keep neutral, or increase the permitting process or costs to get a permit through the system?
I think it streamlines the process. It clarifies. There was a lot of verbiage that maybe wasn't necessary, like when we tried to say what the state requirements are. State requirements don't change very often, but they do change. And so we don't want it, we didn't want to confuse people. And so in that respect, I think it'll make the development process easier, it'll make it quicker, because you won't have those, "Well, if it's over, if it's the one thing here, and it's another thing here, which one do I do?" And then we get phone calls about which one they should do, or they just call us and say, "Just tell me what I need to do, because I can't understand the code or the manual." And so we're working on trying to make things much simpler. And adding the variance piece in there makes it so that if somebody has unique site characteristics, that they don't have to contort themselves into trying to comply, they can apply for a variance. And I think that makes the whole development process much simpler.
Okay. And then, I know this is more of a, I guess, an enforcement issue. You talked, I don't know, a year or two ago, about when we've required people to put in stormwater catchment basins when they put a new house in or whatever. We found out that people complied with that, but then they didn't take care of them. And so I'm wondering, do we have any sort of an idea if it's gotten better? Or how do we go? There's, I heard enforcement a number of times in your presentation. Are we making up rules that people have to comply to, to build? And then it doesn't really have an effective, it's not an effective policy, you might say. Does that make sense? I mean, on the catch basin, it was disappointing to hear that all the work and money spent on implementing that, it just wasn't being carried through with the intent, and it wasn't really a very productive use of money. Now, I know it's code, but I'm just trying to figure out, how do we make sure that all this great work that you've done actually gets used and implemented, and then it's helping our stormwater system? That make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thanks for that, a great question. We require the operations and maintenance plan to be, of the stormwater facility, to be recorded now in the county. And so when people buy a property, whether it's commercial or residential, they'll receive the, they'll receive those documents. Now, whether they read them or not is another question, but. And we're making it clearer to the developers as to what, how it needs to be built, and the developers are getting very good at it now. They don't say, "What do you mean, I need an operations and maintenance plan?" They already know, and they've already recorded in the county, and they have all the paperwork done when the project ends. And so I think in that respect, we've done the public outreach. That's helped a lot with people understanding what they need to do. Homeowners, we've gone out there and talked with different homeowners, and, you know, this is this is what this box in the front of your house is, and this is how you take care of it. And they're, they're like, oh, I can plant what I want in a box, as long as, you know, it's a native or whatever? And I'm, yeah, you can plant pretty much what you want, if it's a native. And it can live in that microclimate. And they had always been told they couldn't do anything with that box. And so they left it and they didn't maintain it. Now they're, you know, I go back and they're maintaining it. And the same with businesses. They were always told they couldn't do anything. And now they find out that they can and they can make it, they can make it better, if that makes sense. Even catch basins, if they think that the city has to come out and clean it, you know, they leave it. And then it gets, they get grungy, they overflow. And when they find out that they're responsible to maintain it, then they just call the company, the company comes and pumps it out. And then they don't have flooding in their parking lot. And so in that respect, again, I think we've done a lot of education that allows homeowners and businesses to kind of take responsibility and make their property the way they want it to be.
Good. I'm glad, because you've done a lot of work and I think it's a lot of really great policy. I just want to make sure that we have the benefits of it too. So it sounds like we're moving in the right direction, so.
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Windlet. Counselor Boob?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I, like, for me, it's like you're talking nuclear physics. I watch your presentation at planning. I was very fascinated by all this. Thank you. It's really like, I ask, you know, maybe to come to your office and learn more about the system, you know, those.
Sure.
I wanted to ask even Erica to walk me around town and show me certain things, because there's a sort of jargon that I don't understand. It's like, wow, I say, wow, I didn't even know what was those, when I walk on Boone Ferry, for example, all those things, that there was a reason. I always say, why are they doing this? You know, and so I think it's very important that we make the public aware that, you know, the water system, there's a, there's a way the city is working on. I really don't, as I am talking now, I follow your presentation and I start understanding, but there are a lot of things. For example, I thought that all the waterways, like, for example, the creeks that we have and all that were part of that system. It, is it?
Yeah, the surface, the creeks are part of our public surface water system. So we take responsibility for making sure that those creeks remain in good condition.
And how about, like, the sewage? Because you were, how, how is it interrelated? Like, because I saw, for example, some creeks where there is sewage underneath.
Oh, you, the wastewater line?
Wastewater, yeah.
So, stormwater and wastewater are gravity-driven. Water systems are pumped, so they're under a force, right? Wastewater has to, it flows by gravity, stormwater flows by gravity, creeks flow by gravity. And so back in the day, they always threw the wastewater lines in the creek or near the creek, because it was also going downhill. But for the most part, we don't like the two to mix.
You don't? Okay. Thank you. I think, I, you know, call me on this one. I will come to your office to learn more and.
You're welcome anytime.
Yes. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Fascinating. Thank you.
Counselor Afkin.
Ms. Johnson, your presentation and your deck was logical, simple, and intuitive. I understood most of it. A couple of questions. I think you clarified the groundwater. It, it's meant to be foundation drain? Or is it groundwater regardless?
Well, it's primarily the fact that we were tying the foundation drains or any groundwater, anything that's collecting groundwater. A French drain system, lots of times, again, the pipes are much lower than our stormwater facilities. We want those stormwater facilities, the top of soil, to only be about a foot and a half from the top of the facility. And in order to make the slope work, the gravity work, they were making them, you know, three feet from the top. And again, it's a safety, public safety issue.
So the exception process that you were referring to, if it, foundation drain is on an uphill lot that would gravity, no problem into these facilities, that exception process would allow that?
Not likely. When you design a facility, it has to be able to treat a certain amount of water. We're taking a 3,000-square-foot roof and we're funneling it into a 140-square-foot planter. So it's like a concentration. Groundwater, you don't, you can't, it's hard to design how much groundwater is actually going to be added to that facility. And at the point at which that stormwater, I'm just, I'm using planters because it's easier to envision a box. That stormwater planter is, in the winter, it's taking on a lot of stormwater, a lot of precipitation that's coming off the roof. And at the same time, you're asking it to take on a lot of groundwater, because in the winter is when the groundwater is the highest and you're going to have the most groundwater. So now you're asking it to do double duty. And it is difficult to design a facility that can treat everything. It would have to be oversized, which means with the stormwater planter, with this box, it's going to be bigger. And people don't really want these boxes to be bigger.
Understood. So the groundwater collection needs to be tied to the city's system?
It can actually be daylighted. So in the event that an upstream property, they put in a French drain system, it can go, you know, down, downhill, as long as it complies with Oregon Drainage Law. Or in some instances, what they've done is they've tied into the public stormwater system, but down gradient of the stormwater facility. So you have your foundation drains here, your stormwater facility here, your public system here. The foundation drains bypass the stormwater facility and tie in to the public system. And then the stormwater facility ties into the public system.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Last question. The project Habitat for Humanity is certainly larger than one acre. With all the changes and clarification we're doing, would that project have to do anything different if they were to permit next year?
No.
Thank you so much.
Can I just follow up? Okay, I'll second. I had the same question about the storm, the stormwater versus the groundwater. So the groundwater, I thought, was water in the ground. It becomes groundwater. Like, if it, it's stormwater, right? If it's running down the roof into a gutter system, down into a, that's stormwater.
That's stormwater.
If it hasn't gone into the ground, it's not groundwater, right?
If, say that again.
Well, like, if it's a water collecting in a French drain, isn't that stormwater?
No, a French drain, actually, you have a perforated pipe in the ground.
Right.
That collects.
At the surface.
Water that's coming up.
Oh, it's collecting water coming up?
Right.
Not coming down?
And then, and then it goes, and then it discharges it out. It does not necessarily accept water coming from the surface down.
Oh.
If you have stormwater coming up, stormwater has to do with impervious area. So anything that's a hard surface.
Yes.
Once surface water, or once stormwater infiltrates into the ground and hits an aquifer or a hard layer, like a clay pan layer, it becomes groundwater.
Yes.
But for the most part, what you're talking about is like a French drain collecting high groundwater.
Yes.
We have a lot of high groundwater here. So that French drain is collecting that groundwater and then conveying it away from the area that is the soggy area.
Oh, I see.
To make it so that it's not so swampy.
What do you call the comment, you know, when people have like a sloped driveway and they'll put in that drain?
Trench drain.
Trench.
A trench drain?
Right. A French drain.
French, not.
Yes. So T-R-E-N-C-H is the driveway.
And those could go into a?
That can go, yes, yes. Definitely it has to be treated, because it's stormwater.
Yeah.
A French drain, F-R-E-N-C-H, collects groundwater underground and conveys it to another place.
Okay.
For disposal.
Okay. So the, most of the stormwater planters, they, they don't drain into a public system, though, do they? Don't they just infiltrate into the ground?
We require onsite infiltration of the 10-year storm. And so our facilities are designed that way. If we get a 25-year storm, there's going to be a lot more stormwater going into that planter. It's not, it's going to overflow. We have overflow pipes in those planters, in those boxes. And then what it does is it fills up and it overflows into a pipe that then goes out into the public system.
All, all the drains have? Because I was under the impression we don't have a very built-out public stormwater system.
We do not. However, we, we have a public stormwater system. Or we have ditches, or we have, yeah.
So all, all residential and commercial properties that have onsite stormwater have a pipe, an overflow pipe that goes to some other?
Or it'll go to where it normally exits the property. Right. There are a lot of properties, projects in the city that cannot infiltrate the 10-year storm. They're clayey, silty clay soils. And in that, in those cases, what we require is for them to treat the groundwater. So through a planter, again, I'm going back to that planter box. It, it drops down through the soil, it, which retains metals, it retains suspended solids, bacteria. And then it sends out that cleaned water out to the public system, which then goes into the streams. The infiltration systems are meant to infiltrate at least the 10-year storm. Which is 3.2 inches every 24 hours.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Counselor Corrigan.
Yeah, I don't want to talk about water, I want to talk about money. So the conversation you and I had, we talked about the fact that fees in lieu had been removed from this document. And I know that we're going to address it in the future. So my concern is, in the process of the discussion, I learned we really do have funding inconsistencies. And our stormwater system is pretty MIA in a lot of places. So really, just talking to us, I think I'm really interested in working to develop a consistent funding strategy for all the stormwater improvement we know we need. Maybe that's January, I don't know when we would do that. Like, it's overwhelming, we don't really have our hands on it in a consistent way.
Maybe that's what the, and that was a good question, Counselor Corrigan, I had the question about the stormwater master, you know, master plan. Is that something that we need to contemplate during a goal setting? Perhaps engineering is going to bring that forward for us to ensure you have the resources.
That's a Erica question.
Good afternoon, Mayor Councilors Erica Rooney, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I believe it's November 19th, the master fees and charges will be in front of you all, as it is every year? Is it first meeting in December? Okay. And that is the time when we look at all of our utility funds. We look at the projections of income based off of the utility fees and our planned expenditures against the current CIP. And we will be having conversations with you at that time about that, as to how big is the fund balance? Is the, is the utility rate keeping up with the needs and the demands? And that's, I think, what you're getting at, Counselor, is about, are we collecting enough funds to meet the needs of our stormwater infrastructure? Is that right?
I'm really kind of interested in how we also, too, can fund future stormwater that we need.
Right. And that's all part of our capital improvement plan, is a list of projects that need to be done, some that are replacement of existing. And then Sonia mentioned earlier the idea that we need to do a new stormwater master plan, an updated one, because the Clean Streams Plan is 15, 16 years old. We need to do a more comprehensive citywide plan that would identify the deficiencies and the replacements, much like our water master plan does, that guides what we spend our money on, the wastewater master plan and the TSP, all guide how we spend our capital. And we'll do the same with the stormwater. But we already have a list of needs identified with stormwater. We just want to expand upon it by doing a more official and formal master plan. But I think you'll see, when, when we come forward in early December on the master fees and charges, you'll see what that situation looks like right now.
So will, will you be in the goal-setting process, bringing forth, you know, the master plan work? Is that something that the council would adopt?
Usually.
You could. But I think, Erica, it's really a question of when you were anticipating we would update the, I think the mayor's question is, when are you thinking we're going to be updating the stormwater master plan? And I think Counselor Corrigan's question is, you know, just like transportation, we have to retrofit. Because we're already a built community, we have to retrofit the areas that were developed without adequate stormwater. And so I think her question is really, like, what does that resource need look like?
Right.
And we would do that in the stormwater master plan.
Exactly. The stormwater master plan will look for all those deficiencies. So in places, and you know where they are, many of them don't even have a pipe in the neighborhood, those will be identified for new pipes. And then in addition to that, there'll be replacement of existing ones or replacement and fixes of outfalls that go into Tryon Creek that need to be addressed, things like that. So it'll be a combination of new and retrofitting existing, yes. And the stormwater master plan, our hope is that we could start something in the next year or so. We've got some people to move around and shuffle around and get that started as soon as we can.
I would assume we'd want to support something like that, so, I mean, we'd have to talk.
Certainly, we'll put it on your list for you to talk about as part of goal setting.
Yeah, I mean, the, to follow on Counselor Corrigan's questions about the fee in lieu that was removed as part of this work, is, and then, I know we're going to have a future conversation about fee in lieu for public improvements. Is that fee in lieu reference public improvements or was that for private improvements? Which would, of course, make no, no sense for people to pay, want them making the improvement. Or were, was that a fee in lieu option for a public improvement?
The fee in lieu program for chapter 3825 had to do with paying a fee instead of having to do a private facility.
Oh, it was for a private facility? Okay. And what we're talking about in the future is public facilities. Yeah, we don't want people paying, we want them just doing the private facility.
Right. But again, it would be the same thing where if a developer paid us to, instead of building the public improvement, we would run into those same types of challenges in regard to cost, design, where to put it, administrative staffing.
We always prefer they build it, but these are the situations where they can't build it. We won't let them build it. You know, like sometimes we say it's not the right time with these improvements.
Well, so I think one thing that I understand about fee in lieu of, typically, they are for places that already have a built-up system in place. And somebody wants to come in and develop. And rather than putting in their onsite stormwater, they'd rather pay, I'm making this up. they'd rather pay, and I'm making this up, $20,000 fee, so that the city will treat the stormwater and deal with it downstream. But they have a mechanism for it. One of the problems we have in this city, and it's a big one, is that we don't have a lot of public stormwater infrastructure to even send it to, let alone deal with treating it at some facility downstream. So, it's not a very appropriate program for us, because we don't have the system in place yet as an alternative for them.
That's right. Now, sometimes there are minor developments though that require the developer to put in a, not only the private system, but also public improvement.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I'm talking about. Are there situations in those minor developments where we would say, well, there are, there's public stormwater improvements, but we can't really, it's like with the transportation, we can't really do it right now. We need a larger set of properties to do this with, or down the road we may do this. Just like with our transportation fee in lieu, um, conversation that, you know, that's what I'm talking about with that fee in lieu. Are there, or is there, does that not really exist with?
Doesn't happen very often. We don't put in that many new roads in this town, for instance, but if we're putting in a new road, they will be putting in a stormwater system with it.
What about just improvements to the road, like adding pedestrian improvements? Sometimes it requires a stormwater component, right?
Well, they have to do some sort of stormwater component to it at that time, yes.
At the same time?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes.
So, it's kind of all part of that same program? So, there's not a situation in which someone's required on the private side to put in the stormwater where they aren't, they, they aren't required to do it, it needs it, but we say, well, you don't have to?
We, I, we would normally say a subdivision went in and they needed to tie into this, uh, they needed to do a public improvement. I would imagine we would require them to extend the lineup.
Yeah.
Okay.
I haven't, I can't think of any.
We wouldn't just say you can build your subdivision.
With no exceptions?
Well, there's the variance criteria.
Variance.
However, the, um, that wouldn't necessarily apply in the case of a large development.
Yeah.
Because it would affect, one of the variance criteria is, will this, uh, cause damage downstream from flooding? Will it degrade water quality? And if you're putting in a large project, it, it wouldn't meet those criteria.
Right. You'd have to be making it worse.
Right.
Yeah. Um, there's on, um, uh, there's a portion in the, uh, of the report talking, I think it might be on, um, I get the page number wrong, but it's talking about, there's a change you made around, it has to do with repairs and maintenance of facility. And I wasn't sure if it was talking about repairs and maintenance to the stormwater facility, or repairs and maintenance to impervious surface, or the structure that's on the property, and saying that it used to be, the change was, it used to be if there was over a certain amount of square feet that had a hydrological impact, then they were required to comply with the standards that they would initially have to comply with. Um, but we changed it to remove the hydrological impact. Now, if they're making any repair and maintenance to, um, of, uh, uh, I think it was the 3,000 square foot threshold, but just the size, and I just didn't know what the repair and maintenance, is it to the facility on that thing? Or just in general to the property?
At 3,000 square feet, it is a large project. And so you would have to, you know, you're exceeding that, uh, stormwater threshold. So, it really doesn't, there is no project that would not have hydrologic impact if it's 3,000 square feet and over.
This is repair and, it just says, this is the, uh, repair or maintenance activities on structures or facilities with greater than or equal to 3,000 square feet of existing impervious surface are subject to the requirements for large projects.
Right. Because a large project is 3,000 square feet or more of, um, new, uh, new impervious, redeveloped impervious, or new plus redeveloped impervious. So, if you are affecting 3,000 square feet or more of impervious area, you're automatically a large project and subject to those requirements. So, it didn't make sense at the time. Now, for linear projects, let's say the, uh, somebody is trenching in a pipe, a stormwater pipe, and they, like the city, um, and they are affecting 3,000 square feet, um, they would not be subject, because trenching, trenching-only projects are not subject to the Stormwater Management Code. That was one of the exemptions that we actually added in, because it doesn't make sense. You're, I mean, why are you, it's, it's a trench, you're putting in a pipe. It doesn't make sense that that would be subject to the stormwater.
So Sonia, I think the question is, is it repair and maintenance of anything that's that big? Like, if you re-roofed a building that was 3,000 square feet, would you be subject to this?
No.
If you repaved, if you repaved a street that was already impervious?
Pardon?
If you repaved a parking lot?
Then you would be subject.
So, there's the, there's the range.
So, what is?
If you repaved a parking lot, you would be subject.
If you, so what's, so to give us an, like a 3,000 square foot, what's that, a large project? Like, is there anything residential that's going to meet that requirement?
Of 3,000 square feet? We have a lot of large projects in the city.
A lot of large projects, okay.
A lot of, most residential projects. The average, uh, impervious area created and/or replaced in the city for private residential, single-family residential, is approximately 3,700 square feet?
Okay. So, most residential, probably, so if someone just does repairs to their driveway, they've already, they already have the facility, let's say it's a new project built under this code, they do it, but then they come, they need to make some fixes to cracks in the driveway? They would have to go through the process again?
Not, not crack repair, no. But if they went in and they removed the asphalt from the driveway, and they basically went down to bare ground and they replaced it, then yes. If they just were doing repairs for the cracks in the driveway here and there, they wouldn't, they would not be subject to the stormwater.
So, is that, is that defined somewhere in the code then?
Yes. Uh, crack repair, uh, um, it's in the, is it in the swim, or is it in the? Let me look. I believe we have exemptions. It's either in the Stormwater Management Manual, or it's actually within the code in regard to the exemptions. And the exemptions are, um, repairs like that are not subject.
What would be an example of a, of a maintenance, then, that would be like a maintenance activity that would subject someone to this?
Um, the repair of a, the replacement of a parking lot? Alligatoring, um, occurring in a parking lot? That's the primary one that I can think of offhand.
So, if it's a parking lot, so I'm just trying, so a parking lot's different than the driveway?
Yes.
But it sounds like it's that the whole, the whole impervious, it's not the, it's not 3,000 square feet that you're doing work to, it's just that the, the property has 3,000 square feet of impervious.
No, it's 3,000 square feet for the project that you're disturbing.
For the project?
That you're disturbing.
Oh, I see. So, if you're not disturbing, so the average home isn't going to have a 3,000 square foot driveway? No?
No.
No.
Hopefully, no, because that would be a really long driveway.
So, they're a large project, because initially they're disturbing over 3,000 square feet, like you said, 3,600 on average. But when they do repairs, it's generally to a smaller area.
Right. The 3,600, 3,700 square feet is for when somebody builds a new house.
That, okay.
Um, single-family residential, in general, they are about 3,700 square feet on average.
So, why though would just repair activity that doesn't have any additional hydrologic impact? Because it's already there? Why would, why are we, why did we change that to remove that requirement? That it has, that it has to have an additional hydrological impact?
Because it's already a, a large project. And so, we wanted it, we wanted all large projects to be subject to the same requirements. So that, how would you prove that it, it has less hydrologic impact than before? You know, if, if you're at a point where your, where your parking lot is, has failed, um, and I, again, I'm, it's like planters, it's easy to visualize a parking lot that has failed. Um, it has basically come semi-pervious. And so, if you replace that with a newly paved parking lot, you're going to have additional hydrologic impacts, because you're replacing it with newly sealed, there's no cracks, there's no infiltration occurring whatsoever. Whereas before you had so many alligator cracks in it that it was quasi-pervious.
So, you're saying you removed it because it was kind of redundant? Because of course these projects are going to have additional hydrological impacts?
Exactly. Because you're taking something that has, is failing, because most people don't repair unless it needs it, and you're replacing it with, um, brand-new hard surface.
So, you're, yeah, but it's a complete tear-up, not just a patch?
Yeah.
You know, you're allowed to patch up and?
Right. You could patch all you want.
Yeah, you just can't redo the whole thing.
So, is this going to be unintended consequences?
This isn't a change.
Oh, this is not a change?
This, this conversation is not a change from the way we've been doing it for years. Um, those, those, those.
So, anytime that?
Same as they've been for a long time, it was just some cleanup in the language.
Right. But let's get back to what the effects, just so I understand what we're talking about. If, say, there's somebody with a parking lot, and it was built, and it has its permits, and it's, it's been doing business for 25 years, and the person sees that their parking lot needs to be resurfaced or resealed. And I don't, I, I don't necessarily agree that it has to get to the point to where it's completely allocated and it's, and it's failing. Water is failing. Are we having that business owner or homeowner, uh, be incentivizing them to, um, keep their property up by, um, having to, when they replace it? What's, they have a new consequence then, right? That they have to deal with?
I don't think so, because that would be the.
What would that consequence be?
That would be the same as, um, I don't want to put on an addition, because I'll have to do stormwater management. Um, you know, I want to, I don't want to put on an addition to my house. Or I don't want to buy that property and put a house there, because then I would be subject to stormwater management. It.
Okay, well, let's just take the Goodyear Station, right over across the street. I would say that that's probably 3,000 square foot parking, parking lot. Okay? They've been there, they've been nice neighbors, they, they keep up their property and whatever. And then the owner of the Goodyear franchise place says, oh my gosh, it's going to cost me, I don't know, he would have to put a stormwater system in, right? If he, if he resurfaced his parking lot so that he could serve his customers and keep his prices down, um, he's, he's now going to pay for the asphalt to replace his, his surface so that it's nice, and so people can drive on it and not trip or fall or things like that. And now he's going to be charged extra, because he has to fulfill a new requirement. Is that correct?
So, we have to be careful, just, words can mean different things to different people. Resurfacing, maybe just going out there and doing crack sealing, or putting on a slurry seal, or even overlaying it? No. But if he goes in and he brings in five big bulldozers and re-takes it all down to the bare ground, and he puts in new, new gravel and rebuilds it from the, literally the dirt up? Yes. Just like when we do roads, when we do a full reconstruction of road, we have to do all-new stormwater upgrades that we didn't, whether we had them or not. If we go in and just add a two inches of asphalt, and sometimes we can, if the road hasn't degraded too far, then we don't have to do stormwater changes. So, it's, it, the, the, the kind of work that they're doing matters. And so, terminology can get confusing when you're talking about. So, we'd have to ask, what is it they're really doing? Are they just resurfacing? That's probably going to be okay. But if they're digging it all up, bringing up the dirt, hauling old stuff out and putting new stuff in, it becomes a major project, just like it does for the roads. So, when we redid Wembley, we, we did, uh, Wembley Road is an example of a road that we reconstructed. We took it all the way down to the base, we went, I don't know how many inches, but it was a good foot, foot and a half probably, of depth, redid the whole thing. We had to do massive amounts, a couple million dollars worth of stormwater upgrades associated with that, because of the trigger, same kind of thing. So, I don't know if that helps, but it kind of depends on what work they're doing.
Right.
Okay, that helps.
I look at public roads being slightly different than a business owner that is, that, let's just say that their neighbor's, um, bad stormwater effects are creating, um, erosion and so on, uh, and he's forced to have to, um, take out, um, the asphalt, so he can build it back up to make it correct. He's going to have a, he now is subject to having the stormwater, um, whatever, new, new regulations, right? Or upgrade his stormwater? Is that correct?
If they're disturbing more than 3,000 square feet, yes.
But that's always been the case.
So, that would incentivize him to do half the parking lot at one time, and then half the parking lot at another time? Okay, I'm just, I'm just, okay. I, I just look at unintended consequences sometimes of policy, and, and I look at it as being, if somebody has something there, I, I get it, I get it, there's some terminology that if they go all the way down and redo it and all that kind of stuff, versus just resurfacing it, so.
Yeah, it's helpful. Yeah. Um, and the, the last question I had was just on the enforcement, you know, provisions, whether it's, you know, any, any part of that, these in, different enforcements, um, or cutting someone off from the system, you mentioned, in, in extreme, you know, circumstances. But what does the code allow for in terms like due process in those situations?
What do you mean by due process?
Well, what, um, what kind of appeals ability do we give people if they contest it, or how does that work?
Are you talking about the variance, if they apply for a variance?
No, on the, any enforcement action.
So, if, if somebody, um, let's say they had a illicit discharge or construction site discharge?
Okay.
Um, in general, uh, first we say, don't do that. Um, we educate, assuming that they don't know what they, that they were in violation. Um, and then we, in general, warn them. Now, this doesn't, it depends on how bad it is. But, you know, sometimes it'll go straight to a citation. But the escalating enforcement says you need to keep ratcheting up the enforcement until you get compliance. That's what the permit requires, the stormwater permit. And so, um, before we said, well, if it's a minor violation, it's this, if it's a major violation, it's that. But the idea of what a major and minor violation were was kind of left up to the inspector. And we looked at that and said, that, you know, so is the inspector having a bad day? It's going to be a major violation. And the inspector's having a great day, it's going, everything's a minor violation.
Right.
And so, we're taking away that ability to, uh, uh, play on how somebody's day is going. It makes it, um, less favoritism, it makes it more, uh, level playing field for everybody. But it still adds that, that stepping up of enforcement until somebody actually says, okay, now it, it's something I'm going to listen to. Um, if we, uh, if we warned people all the time and left it at that, we would not get compliance. And then we would have all kinds of illicit discharges and construction site discharges, and then the state would come after us.
Yeah, no one wants that. But I guess my question is if, let's say, in an extreme situation, you say this person is, you know, dumping paint into the, the system, and they say, oh my gosh, it's not, I'm not the one dumping the paint. I'm just, what is the process? Do they, is, is there someone that can, you know, kind of adjudicate that there's a dispute? Does the city have to say, no, we can, here's the evidence?
We, we allow, um, when we write a citation, um, it goes before the court.
Okay, so that's the process?
Right. And then the judge determines what that citation, what that fine will actually be. We put the presumptive fine on the ticket, but the judge will determine what the actual fine is.
Okay. So, if they want to contest it, they do it in the court?
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, thank you, that's, that's great, it sounds good.
And Stephanie is a restorative prosecutor, so she will make sure that.
I was just about to say that very thing, it would be citation.
These citations do go to municipal courts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, I want to follow up on what Counselor Wedlund brought up, and see if I understood this correctly. This 3,000-square-feet, whether it's justified or not, that definition is not part of this revision, it's already in place, correct?
Has been for 15 years, 12 years.
Okay. Having said that, I wholeheartedly agree with him that if there is an existing condition with whatever the square feet is, and somebody wants to replace that, why are we holding them to a different standard? Now, we don't have to have that conversation here because that's an existing code, that's what we're enforcing right now. But if there are enough of us having that concern, then we're going to have to bring it through the process and do something different. And the example that went through my mind is that if I'm a retired person, I have a home with a flagged lot that has a driveway, long driveway to get to my house, and it's getting old, and I want to replace it with new, now I have another expense that I have to deal with, and that's hardship to me.
But you also have the opportunity to put a slurry seal on it. You don't have to replace the complete driveway.
You have that option, but sometimes those options don't work anymore. And you apply the law. Again, that's an existing requirement, it's not part of this. You have my support on all of these revisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking all these good questions and walking us through. Again, there was a lot in here, very comprehensive.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, that'd be great.
I'd like to move to tenderly approve Ordinance 2948 and direct staff to return on November 19th, 2024, with the final version of the ordinance, including findings and conclusions for LU 24-0022.
Second.
All right, motion made by Counselor Wedlund, seconded by Counselor Umbo. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Rooney? Thank you both. We are going to take a brief recess.
Thank you. You know, it's when you say something and it...
I know, it was funny. I thought it was mine.
Why?
[inaudible]
Okay, we're back in order. And next on the agenda is item 8.2. This is Resolution 24-36, a resolution of the City Council adopting a housing production strategy. We are going to start with a review of the legislative hearing procedure by Ms. Osneck.
Thank you, Mayor Buck, members of the council. Despite this resolution coming to you from extensive work by your volunteer planning commission, this is actually a legislative policy decision which is within your sound discretion. The public comment process will begin with a presentation by Eric Olson and his, the folks from MIG, thank you. And the public comment is set forth in the agenda, which is that individual commenters are subject to a time limit of five minutes per person. The clock timer will let you know when your time is up by showing a yellow then red light. The mayor will call people up to the table who have signed up to comment, and he'll call you by your names. And if there are any other associations here to testify, you have time, sorry, 10 minutes, and that's all. Oh, and I need to ask counsel, just by a show of hands, are there any counselors that need to declare a financial conflict of interest? Not ex parte, not sight visit, just a financial conflict of interest? No, if you would be affected by the provisions of the various strategies that are being proposed. All right, seeing none, we're ready for the presentation.
And if anyone here wants to testify and hasn't already filled out one of the blue forms, just there in the back, just bring it forward. Okay, Ms. Olson, floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor Buck and City Council. So we're here tonight, obviously, to conduct a public hearing on the proposed housing production strategy. This proposal tonight would adopt the HPS, as will shorten the document to be called, as an amendment to the comprehensive plan, similar to the housing needs analysis last year. This is, of course, a major milestone for the project, so I just want to thank the council, as well as members of the Housing Production Strategy Task Force, the Planning Commission, all the folks in the community that have helped contribute to this large project, and the various different community outreach events that we were able to conduct for this. So we got some great feedback, and we're glad that that's been able to improve this overall final product. So just thanking everybody for all the time they've dedicated to this. I also want to mention that we have a couple of folks here via Zoom that are joining us virtually tonight. So our project consultants, Matt Hasty and Kate Rogers, are here, and they will be, or at least Kate will be helping out with a portion of the presentation tonight. A quick overview of the agenda. We'll start with a little bit of a project overview that I will be giving you a summary of, talk about some of the revisions that we made to the draft housing production strategy based on your input the last council study session, and of course, talking about the draft housing production strategy itself. We'll go into a little bit more detail on that. I think it's actually going to be Kate from MIG taking that portion of the presentation, so apologies about that. And then we'll talk about next steps. So before we get started, I wanted to note that we received some written testimony regarding the proposal after the materials had been distributed. On Thursday, October 24th, we received a letter from Liz Hartman on behalf of the Lake Oswego Chamber of Commerce regarding the proposed housing production strategy. That is included as Exhibit G5, and it's a fairly recent exhibit, it was made recently. This letter indicated that the chamber supports six of the proposed strategies, seeing that the others have already been implemented, and they did not take a position on the STC Fee Schedule strategy. When it comes to Option 1, the chamber was, you know, in support of making the code simpler, more direct, and more effective, and requested that builders and developers be involved in that review. When it comes to Option 3, they supported the idea with no net loss of commercial, retail, or business property, so that's the rezoning strategy. So they support rezoning as long as it doesn't result in a net loss of commercial, retail, or business. And urged the city to consider targeted easing of height restrictions to allow sort of retail development to become mixed use with housing above. They also supported evaluating the multiple-unit property tax exemption, or MPT, but expressed a few concerns about potential loss of tax revenue. They supported the low-income housing, or rental housing tax exemption, but thought that it might have a minimal impact, even though they supported it, they thought it would have a smaller impact than some of the others. Option 11, the tax decrement financing strategy, they supported that option, but urged the city to ensure that any TIF projects are mixed use and not just housing. And they expressed support for the affordable housing preservation inventory as well. So that's the Exhibit G5. Yesterday, we received a letter from resident of the Lake Forest neighborhood, Carolyn Krebs, and that's included as Exhibit G3. Ms. Krebs did not raise any applicable policies in her letter, and staff could not identify any policies applicable to these comments. She did share an article from Metro regarding building green space into affordable housing, and asked that the removal of open space requirements not be considered as a strategy to promote affordable housing. So I should just quickly note that the adoption of the HPS does not equate to adopting such a policy to remove open space requirements in high-density areas. That was really just kind of described as one potential area that we could look into for the code audit and amendments strategy, not necessarily just outright removal, but just kind of looking into those based on some input that we got from developers in the community. So we did recommend addressing him, but this is essentially, you know, none of the details of what would be ultimately adopted under these strategies are included in the HPS, really just adopting this roadmap, this sort of general outline of the strategies, but there are a lot of details that will need to be hashed out during the course of, you know, these projects being actually implemented. So this is the, that would be the sort of ideal avenue to have this conversation, and it's something that we've certainly taken note of. She also asked that the council consider her previous written testimony to the planning commission, which she included as Exhibit G1. We did address that in the PC findings and at the planning commission, so I'm not going to go too much into that tonight. Earlier today, we received a letter from Lisa Adato on behalf of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network, and that has been included as Exhibit G4. The letter indicated that LOSN supports nine of the proposed strategies, acknowledging that three others are already in place. And again, they did not take a position on the STC... SDC Fee Schedule Strategy. It's very similar to what we received for the Planning Commission hearing, that was also included as Exhibit, Exhibit G two, excuse me. So I won't go into too much detail, but the letter did note, among other things, that projects, including multifamily residential, can use less energy and space per person and help reduce our per capita carbon footprint, and is therefore in line with the sustainability plan that's being pursued by LOSN. They also mentioned that seniors, workers, and others in Lake Oswego need an affordable place to live, and that the project will help local businesses by creating more customers for retail stores and restaurants. They had a few comments and considerations that you can review. They want to save as many trees as possible through creative design, want to make sure that affordable housing is the result of any potential use of the MPT strategy. I think it's important to include the state and federal fair housing provisions in our local codes as well, and would like to see long-term sustainability features in homes that are supported by public dollars. So that's one thing to mention there. We, yeah, I think I've already gone over the chamber's letter. And we also received one, another written testimony right before the hearing today from Sarah Walker, who's the Chair of the Housing Production Strategy Task Force. Unfortunately, Ms. Walker was not able to join us tonight, so she ended up submitting written testimony on behalf of the HPS Task Force. More or less, Chair Walker just shared her appreciation of staff and her excitement about being a part of developing the housing production strategy. She shared a few notes about some of the strategies included, particularly the reasons she is excited to see the code audit and amendments, rezoning, and public-private partnership strategies being adopted by the city. I'd also just note today that we're joined by a few members of our Housing Production Strategy Task Force in the audience tonight. Just go ahead and raise your hands, but we have David Tangval, we have Rebecca Lane, and Doug Quarter here, here, joining us tonight. So we might be hearing a little bit from them later in the presentation, but unfortunately, Chair Walker wasn't able to join us due to a work conflict. So again, thank you so much for your work on this project, the Task Force members. Thank you, of course, for your work on this project, and your continued dedication to making the city more livable and more, more affordable. All right, so now I will get into the project overview, just something that I think we've talked about here a lot at the City Council, so I'll try to make it fairly quickly through this section. All right, so just kind of thinking about why we're here, what we're doing with the housing production strategy, this is in response to requirements from the state that cities plan for the housing needs of all community members, specifically that we complete an HNA every six to eight years, and prepare a housing production strategy that looks at specific actions that can address the needs identified in the HNA within one year of their adoption, so really sixty-eight years for, for that as well. So of course, we were here last year in October of twenty twenty-three, and we adopted an updated housing needs analysis, looking at the city's twenty-year housing needs and whether there's enough land in the city to meet those needs. Of course, we're now working to adopt an HPS to identify, or to meet those needs that were identified in the HNA. You can see this has been quite a long project, you know, two components, the HNA and the HPS. Of course, we're getting close to the end here, so this is a little bit, a little bit off, but we're actually in November, of course, but really have done a lot of work on the HNA. A lot of steps in this process have led us to get where we are, and community engagement has been woven throughout. So in terms of just some of the community engagement that was conducted here, and some of how we approached the project, of course, you're aware that the Housing Production Strategy Task Force, or HPS Task Force, was established early on in the process, helped us develop recommendations for the housing needs analysis, as well as the housing production strategy. They met eight times in total ultimately, with five of those being solely dedicated to developing recommendations for the housing production strategy. There were twenty members appointed with a wide range of different backgrounds, ranging from elected officials, of course, Mayor Buck, folks on different city boards and commissions, folks with industry experience with real estate development, building experience, affordable housing experience, and folks with experience finding needed housing. So really, a fairly diverse group of folks that were on the, the task force. An additional public engagement that we conducted for the project was, we did some targeted outreach to the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, the DEI Advisory Board, the fifty-plus Advisory Board, there was a presentation at a mayor's roundtable event, a Cruzway Economic Forum presentation last year, and builder and developer interviews that were conducted as well. We held an online open house for the HPS back in March, and that was really kind of an online survey that was open for about two weeks for folks to fill out. There was also a virtual community forum held in March, in addition to, of course, all the City Council and Planning Commission meetings that were held, and those five meetings of the Task Force. So in terms of kind of what we found in the HNA, I just wanted to do a really quick run through, a reminder of what the needs are that we're hoping to address with the HPS. Again, not going to spend too much time here, but in terms of current needs, of course, while Lake Oswego is generally an affluent community, we know that not all households in the city are wealthy, and over forty percent of those households earn less than a hundred thousand per year, and nearly twenty percent earn less than fifty thousand. And of course, you know, this is something that we're all aware of as well, homeownership's costing, homeownership costs increased significantly in Lake Oswego, which is consistent with what's been happening in the national level. We know that there's very little housing in the city that's existing that's available to folks earning lower incomes that we found that, you know, are here living right now. If they were to look for new housing, they would have a much harder time. So around two-thirds of those existing housing units are unaffordable to anyone earning, earning less than a hundred thousand per year, so pretty stark issue here. And we also know that nearly half of renter households in Lake Oswego are considering, considered housing cost burdened, which means they pay more than thirty percent of their income on housing. In terms of future needs, we'll need to add, you know, at least two thousand new housing units by twenty forty-three to meet the projected demand, so housing will need to be produced across the spectrum of the income range in order to meet those needs. And, you know, different types of housing, a wide range of housing types are also needed to meet the range of household sizes and incomes. So that's something that we have a lot more information about in the HNA, of course. More than a third of what we expect in terms of our future needs, new housing units over the next twenty years will be needed by low-income households. The private market, of course, you know, we know this from experience, is not accustomed to delivering those units on their own, so it's usually something that requires some type of public intervention. And there's also a shortage of buildable residential land across all different zone types to meet that twenty-year housing need, or that eighty-six acre deficit has, has been identified by the state. So really, the key housing gaps that we identified through our contextualized housing need analysis was, we're looking for affordable housing for low and moderate income households, greater housing choices within neighborhoods, including middle housing, opportunities for aging in place. We, you know, found to be true, something that, again, I think most of us know, just anecdotally, that more than twenty percent of the population here is over sixty-five, so there's a significant senior population within the city that needs to be accommodated. There's a gap in terms of options for more attainable homeownership, including condos and middle housing, and there's a gap when it comes to apartments with family-sized units, so two-to-three-bedroom apartments, you know, that can accommodate nearly a third of the current households in the city that currently have children. Multifamily housing outside of the town centers is also identified as a key housing gap by this analysis. So in terms of what the HPS is hoping to do, we're hoping to work towards meeting those needs and filling those gaps. It really, you know, establishes a work plan for the next eight years of what the city will do to meet those needs, and we will be held accountable by the state of Oregon to a certain degree. There will be sort of progress reports, et cetera, to make sure that we're implementing the strategies in the HPS, and that they're having their intended impact on our housing needs. All right, so I will talk a little bit about what has changed in the HPS since we last spoke. Council provided us with some great input on some, mostly just the ordering of strategies or the timeline related to the individual strategies. So we went through and made some changes in response to those comments, also in response to what we heard from the Planning Commission and the HPS Task Force. So this is some of the more recent work that we've done on this project, talked about this with you last in July, so it's, it's been a while, but we have incorporated the changes and followed the process to bring them back to you here. With respect to the homebuyer opportunity limited tax exemption strategy, we had considered that and received direction not to include it in the HPS, so it has not been included. Other changes to the HPS include really moving that rezoning strategy up based on council direction from a medium term to a near-term strategy, and making sure that we're addressing residential capacity in areas not exclusively zoned for residential use first, so that's really the first phase of the rezoning that we expect to be, that near-term piece. We also moved the modify SDC Fee Schedule Strategy up from a long-term to a medium-term strategy in response to some feedback from DLCB. We moved the affordable housing preservation inventory strategy back to twenty twenty-seven, moved the pre-approved plan sets for ADUs back to twenty twenty-nine or twenty-thirty, moved back the evaluate accessible design incentives or mandates from medium-term to a longer-term strategy, and moved the, evaluate the MPT or multiple unit property tax exemption strategy back to a long-term strategy from a medium term. So really, just kind of making some adjustments in response to the comments that were provided by council last time we were here. Also, we had added some notes to consider applying MPT to the preservation of existing affordable housing units, I think, based on input from Joe last time. I will just also mention that we, another sort of change that we made was to address the fair housing policy and education in two phases, so really looking at the policy piece first and the education piece later. That was something that we were, you know, I think council initially gave us some direction to hold off on that, but we had received guidance from the state and a number of folks on the Housing Production Task Force, and, you know, other folks as well, basically just stressing the importance of having that policy to serve as sort of an overarching, you know, lens with which to view our, all of our work. So really, the idea of adopting that later in the process didn't make sense. So what we did was, we opted to split that up into two pieces, with that initial adoption of those policies taking place earlier, and then some of the more education and outreach-related components taking place later, just to make sure that that is consistently applied throughout the HPS process, those fair housing principles. All right, and that concludes my section of the presentation. I think right now I'll attempt to hand it over to Kate Rogers, who's joined us here remotely, and will help out talking about the specifics of what we've, are proposed to adopt in the HPS.
All right, thank you so much, Eric, and good evening, councilors. And it looks like you are seeing my screen, so everything's working well. All right, so I'm going to step through the final recommended strategies in the, in the housing production strategy. It says, it says draft, but I mean, I suppose it's draft until it's officially adopted, but is this, this kind of the final form unless you, you all recommend changes this evening? And since this is information that you all have, have heard multiple times, I think I'm going to try to step through this pretty quickly, and just kind of hit on some of the highlights of, of each strategy. But before we get into the details, just going to go over the kind of categories of housing need, which is the, the organizing framework that we used to kind of divide up the strategies that are in the HPS. So the first category is overall housing production and supply. So this is recognizing that the city needs to kind of promote housing development, you know, across the income spectrum, across the housing type spectrum, density levels, et cetera, and really promote housing production overall. So these strategies are kind of geared towards boosting supply overall. The next category is increasing housing choices. So this is really making sure there are a wide variety of housing types, sizes, forms, you know, that meet a wide range of needs that are in the community, including a particular emphasis on housing that meets, needs for folks that are aging in place, for older adults, folks with mobility challenges that need special accessibility considerations, so making sure there are strategies to support all of those housing choices. The next category focused specifically on affordable housing for lower-income households. So these are strategies that promote development of government subsidized, specifically income-restricted housing units that meet lower income or moderate income housing needs. And then the last category is kind of a, it would be a catch-all, except there's just one, one strategy in that category, which is the, the fair housing-focused strategy. So those are the categories, and then to review, kind of provide an overview of all the strategies that are included in the HPS, and this, you know, gives it, gives you a sense of what's kind of near-term versus longer-term, and then compares kind of, sort of expected cost level from the city's side, and then level of effort. So you can see that a lot of these strategies are sort of higher effort strategies, and in some cases, those are geared towards kind of longer-term efforts, but in other cases, you know, things like public-private partnerships, that's something that, you know, takes, can take a lot of effort on the city's side, but it's something that the city is kind of already doing and could continue to do going forward. And then reviewing the implementation timeline, I think that, the, the aim was to sort of provide a balanced approach, where you have, you know, kind of a reasonable set of strategies to kind of tackle in the near term, within the next couple of years, and then kind of balance that with some of the, the longer-term strategies. And, you know, staff and, and our consultant team really heard from City Council at earlier meetings, that really the high priority strategies should be the focus in the near term, things like the code audit, a rezoning, things like that, that could have a big impact. Really want to focus on those. And you'll also see where we have proposed some kind of phased approaches. So in the, in the rezoning strategy, we have a focus on non-residential lands and options for rezoning those to support housing production within the next couple of years, and then longer term, or in the medium term, you could look at potential rezoning of, of lower-density residential areas. And then similar phased approaches for the SDC fees, strategies for cottage clusters in the near term, and then a bigger look at SDC methodology in the longer term, and then also the fair housing policy, as Eric mentioned, doing the kind of policy update in the near term, and then kind of focus more on education and outreach and trainings later on. So I'm going to get into the, the strategies here, so this is the first category, which is focused on overall housing production and supply. And the first strategy here is the code audit and code amendment strategy. So this is something that to tackle in the, in the near term, but it's expected to take a couple of years. And this is really looking at where are there opportunities to revise regulations that could be obstacles or could be constraining housing production? So we've listed some of the types of things that could be, could be focus areas for this code audit and amendments, things like moving barriers to accessory dwelling units, focusing on housing types that are really needed in the community, like smaller units, but that this could include a pretty wide range of housing types and kind of sections of the code that you'd really want to take a kind of comprehensive look at. The next strategy is something that is kind of happening in a parallel effort, so removing or reducing minimum parking requirements. This is associated with the state's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Program. As I mentioned, this is happening on kind of a separate timeline, but really wanted to recognize the benefits for housing production with removing or reducing parking requirements. Just recognizing that parking can tend to limit flexibility on the site, can add to development costs, and really kind of hinder housing production in some cases, so it is an important contributor to, to those efforts. Next strategy is rezoning land. So I mentioned that this, we recommended kind of a phased approach, where in the near term, you could focus on rezoning commercial lands or other, you know, other lands that are not specifically zoned for residential uses, and look at opportunities to redesignate those to support housing. And then, again, in the longer term, you could look at potentially sort of upzoning lower denser, lower-density areas in places where it would make sense to do so, and thinking about, you know, proximity to transportation and services and transit and things like that would be important considerations. Next category is related to housing choices. So Strategy Four is around evaluating accessible design incentives or mandates, and this strategy is framed as sort of evaluate, because this is something that I think the city would need to kind of do a little more study and research to determine what would be the best approach and the most effective and feasible approach, to either provide some sort of financial or sort of code bonus-type incentive to support accessible units. accessible units, or potentially even requiring a certain number of units, for example, in multi-unit development, to have enhanced accessibility features beyond what would be required just under the, you know, building code requirements. So this is something that would be, is recommended as a longer term strategy, I think in particular, because it would take a little bit more study, and I think some of the incentives that could be used, you know, might not be in place today. And I'll also mention, or I'll kind of refer back to this strategy and another strategy that's focused on tax abatement, the tax abatement approach. Which I will do right now, actually, this is the next strategy, which is the multiple unit property tax exemption or MPT. So this is a, you know, a 10-year property tax exemption. It's a pretty flexible program that the city has a lot of kind of room to, to refine and target to the types of housing and locations and features that you really want to encourage, as long as it's considered a multi-unit, either a middle housing development or a multifamily development. So one of the possible ways to target this program is to support accessibility, accessibility, so make it available to developments that are including accessible design features. It could also be used potentially, and this is something that we heard, I think from city council, that it might make sense as a way to support moderate income housing units. So in that kind of 80 to 120% of the median income range, as opposed to the sort of lower income targets of some of the other tax exemption strategies. And another possible approach for this strategy that was discussed was using it to preserve, preserve the affordability of existing lower cost housing. So not necessarily for new housing, but looking at where there's existing lower cost housing and offering this incentive to encourage that to remain affordable over the longer term. The next strategy is pre-approved plan sets for accessory dwelling units. This, again, is a longer term strategy. I think it was something that was, wasn't seen as a very high priority right now, given the potential impact on housing production, but it would be a way to make ADU construction a little more streamlined, straightforward, could save costs, especially for, you know, individual property owners that might want to build an ADU on their property. It would simplify that process for them. And then the next strategy is modifying system development charge fee schedule. This, this is another one that had a phased approach. So it would begin in the near term to look at the cottage housing or cottage cluster SDC fees. But then in the longer term, the city could undertake a larger study and potentially reconsider your SDC fee schedule so that it's tied more directly to the size of a home, which would not only kind of help encourage smaller housing units, but would also better tie the fees charged with development to the impact on the system, since smaller housing units tend to have fewer occupants and less impact on infrastructure and facilities. And the next category focused on affordable housing has a number of strategies within it. This one, the nonprofit low income housing tax exemption, as you know, you have already adopted. That happened earlier in, in May of this year, and that was specifically requested by, by some nonprofit housing developers that are currently working in the city. So in this would, this is a kind of an ongoing tax exemption. There's no limit on how long it could apply, but it does require annual renewal. So you'd have to kind of submit an annual request to maintain the tax exemption. The next strategy is the low income rental housing tax exemption, which the difference here, there's a number of differences, but a major difference is this is a 20-year tax exemption. So there's kind of a, as long as you're, you maintain qual, you maintain eligibility, you could continue to have a tax exemption for up to 20 years, as long as you, you know, the units are reserved for folks earning 60% AMI for the first year and 80% for the subsequent years. Another difference with this tax exemption is that both nonprofits and for-profit developers could be eligible for it. So that's a difference between the exemption that's already been adopted. So we do recommend this one, that the city consider adopting this as kind of a way to complement the existing tax abatement and make it sort of more widely, or make tax abatement sort of more widely available. The next strategy is public-private partnerships for affordable housing. This is something that the city is already doing, supporting developers in a variety of ways, including, I mean, one example is the Mercy-Greenbree Affordable Housing Development at Merrill Hirst Commons. There's also the Habitat for Humanity project. The city's been supporting those entities in a variety of ways. If we could, if the city could consider additional ways to support, you know, nonprofit housing developers in a kind of more proactive way, including donating land, providing grants or loans, providing direct funding if a funding source were available, and then also leveraging federal, state, and regional resources, which is something that the city is already doing, but could kind of do more of. The next strategy that's also kind of in the funding category is using tax increment financing, or TIF, to support affordable housing development. And this is something that's kind of building on efforts that are already underway to look at expanding urban renewal and TIF in the foothills neighborhood. So that's something that the city is already working on and studying. And the recommendation would be to really make affordable housing a priority in, in that urban renewal plan. And those, those funding, the funds could be used in a variety of ways to support affordable housing development, mixed income development, mixed-use buildings, et cetera, that might be challenging to build otherwise. So that's kind of a begin in the near term strategy, but it's because it's a kind of a multi-year process to get that urban renewal area up and running. It's expected to be completed in the longer term. Next strategy is an affordable housing preservation inventory. This is something that would be kind of something that the city could do to kind of document all the existing, both subsidized affordable housing and just lower cost existing housing that's out there in the community. And it would be helpful for the city to kind of know what those units are, where they are, what the, what the current housing costs are. And that would help, help the city kind of think about how it might prioritize a, an affordable housing preservation strategy in the future if, say, additional funding became available, or if you wanted to kind of think about ways to partner with existing housing, you know, property owners. So just kind of provide that information to guide some of those efforts in the future. And then the last strategy is the fair housing policy and education. Again, this is a kind of a phased strategy where the, we'd recommend updating the comprehensive plan to add a new policy that would explicitly affirmatively further fair housing, so making that an official city policy in the comprehensive plan. And this would really kind of demonstrate the city's commitment to housing equity and preventing housing exclusion in the city. And then longer term, since this is kind of a sort of a higher effort strategy, doing more to kind of educate staff and decision makers about fair housing issues, how to identify those issues, what, you know, what rights do residents have, that kind of thing. So that's where we are. I think that's, that's our last strategy. So I think I'm going to hand it back to Eric on to do next steps. And I'll keep, I can keep sharing, Eric, if that's
Yeah, it's just one slide here. So, yeah, that's fine if you just want to go ahead and advance it. In terms of next steps, considering, you know, sort of pending the outcome of today, we could be adopting findings back here at council on November 19th. And if that were the case, we would start implementing more or less right away. We would need to start getting going for 2025 on projects such as the code audit and amendments, rezoning, cottage clusters, SDCs, low income rental housing tax exemption, and the fair housing policy update. So a lot on our schedule that we are supposed to at least begin in 2025. So a lot of things to start scoping and grants to start applying for, and all sorts of activity that will start to implement the HPS. And with that, I will stop and field questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Well, our, our procedure here calls for us to take public testimony. So we will do that next, and we'll come back to the questions. And first up, we have Mr. Pullman.
I'll be really fast, because Eric did a wonderful job of summarizing our letter from the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network.
Give us your name real quick.
Oh, sorry. Mark Pullman, board member of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network.
Thank you.
And our written testimony was sent in, and Eric did a nice job of summarizing it. So I won't take up any more of your time. I personally support it, and also the LOSN support the findings.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Pullman. I appreciate it. Mr. Evans.
Good evening. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Buck, members of the council. My name is Matt Evans. I'm here tonight representing the Lake Oswego Chamber of Commerce, its board of directors, its 450 business members in our community, as well as our Government Affairs Committee. I'd like to start off, if I could, tonight by thanking Eric Olson for the generous gift of his time to the chamber as it strove to understand the housing production strategy and the need for it. He reached out and helped our Government Affairs Committee understand these issues, and it's very, we find, found his input very valuable. He was willing to answer questions when we had them. It was a wonderful experience being able to work with him. I also thank him, as the previous speaker did, for giving, basically giving my testimony for me. I'd be happy to not repeat that and also be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. So let me ask the chamber, you know, we've, there's been one project on Meadows there that was a commercial, you know, office, zoned office commercial that we rezoned to allow for multifamily at the request of the property owner there. Does the chamber support projects like that, even though it resulted in the loss of the commercial property?
It's going to be interesting to, to watch that sort of a strategy develop, because there's been a lot of discussion about how can we take these suddenly vacant office buildings that have been heavily used over the last decades and suddenly find themselves with no tenants? And is there some way to convert those into housing and help alleviate the shortage? The question is going to be the cost, and obviously, if somebody wants to take that on, it's going to be fascinating to have at least a pilot project locally to try to make that happen. We are concerned about the loss of commercial property. The question is going to be, in the long run, what is going to happen on the commercial property, the office property front? My view is that we have a number of leases of these office spaces that are going to be coming due over the next two years, five years, in some cases, maybe even longer. Are those leases going to be re-upped? Are those companies going to relocate somewhere else, or are they going to not need that office space? There's been a little bit of snapback on the whole work from home movement, where you're now seeing companies mandate almost that their workers come back to the office. So the question is whether or not this return to the office thing has any legs, or whether or not eventually it'll stall out and we'll have this hybrid situation.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We, like with LOSN, we appreciate the chamber as a community partner being involved.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Tangwald.
Ajay Quadaj, just come on down. Mayor Buck and council, my name is David James Tangwald at GRI. I'm a graduate of the Realtor Institute, and I live at Six Mountain Circle up here in the grotto at Mountain Park. My testimony is in favor of the housing production strategy after sitting on the committee with Mr. Olson and our chairperson, and the, and the time that we actually spent, I think when we got in here and we were challenged and, and projected with this particular project, you know, what are we doing? And we were looking at each other going, here, now, us, really? And, and it came down that way. And I'm really impressed with the time and effort and the things that we've come up with, with the consultants, that we have viable, tangible things to present to you tonight. And I'm in favor of all of that and the way that it's been presented and organized, and put into financial and timeline sense for you so that it makes sense. I think that coming from where we were two years ago to where we are today, I think is commendable to, to each of you. And so I'm in favor of that. A little bit, while I have some time left, I just want to explain who I am and how I fit into this. I'm a renter at the age of 60, up in Mountain Park here. And I started my career here in 1983 in Lake Oswego. So I want to build in the Lake Oswego ties for you so you can see what happened to somebody. Why am I here? Why am I here at the age of 60? And, and that's really what I wanted you to see tonight, is in 1983, I started at Oregon. There was a sign up that said, sign up for the Street of Dreams. And I signed up for the Street of Dreams, and I became a parking lot attendant there. And I was with the show for about 21 years. During that time, I also started my real estate career. So I had that tie to the Home Builders Association of Metropolitan Portland on Bangy Road right here in Lake Oswego, under the guise of Jim Goodrich and Vaughn Summers back then. In 1993, I became chairman of the show. I'm out of the parking lot, and that was up at our adjoining city here of West Lynn. And in 94, as chairman, brought the show to Lake Oswego at Merrill Hirst, which is nice to see the Habitat project over there. So we went from next door jurisdiction where we were taking people up the hill like this on Tandler, to Merrill Hirst where we had to push a button and get across the street just like that. It was an interesting dichotomy to be in there, and the changes that had happened just in topography and what it allowed the show to do. It was, it was, it was great. It was an honor to be there. It really was, to chair both those shows. I chaired it four times in a row. That Lake Oswego one in 94, we raised our children here in Lake Oswego by design, on purpose, sent them to Bryant and Waluga, where we lived, Lakeview Boulevard. And that was important to us, so much so that after '08 and '09, when we'd had some financial situations, leaving the house and on Lakeview, we continued to rent in Lake Oswego. After eight years of public school for both children, we decided, and we, this had been a long-term plan for private school, and we went to Jesuit High School, sent them through Jesuit. Coming back here now to Lake Oswego to, and during that time, I'd spent eight years working for a real estate firm, the largest one in the state, on Cruzway. So I'd always had this tie to Lake Oswego, even not being here. I was raised at Alvin Rose Dairy in a house that my grandfather built on the Lamont Meridian. So I was a Norwegian on a Swiss dairy. And then I ended up in Lake Oswego. And I tell you this because it's why am I here? Why am I here? And so now we've chosen to be here, like we chose in the first place, as empty nesters, to be at Mountain Park. And, and that is a real edification, I think, to why are we all here? You know, what is it? And for me, I had to think about that. I'm not here because of me. I'm here because of the person I married 30 years ago, because Jennifer was raised here in, in Lake Oswego and went to Lake Ridge High School. And I think that tying that knot together and letting you guys see that, that as a kid from Washington County make it up here at the age of 60, to present to you in that kind of a situation, what, what was the trigger? And the trigger was that, that my wife and her being raised here in Lake Oswego, and how important that was to her family. So I think that kind of seeing that oversight, seeing the time and effort that I put in and how my career was, was not necessarily lived here all the time, what, how important Lake Oswego can be in the housing particular industry. And, and we don't know where these people are going to come from, or who they are, or what they're doing. But, but, you know, six decades later, what that means to somebody to make the choice to live in a situation where it's tough to meet rent. That 30% number you saw is real for families. It really is, who, who put their kids through school and do the things that, that they need to do. Making rent is tough in this city, and, and we're going to continue to do it. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Mr. Tangwald. Thank you for your service on the Thank you for your service on the task force as well.
You bet.
Mr. Lane, Mr. Quarter, thank you both as well and thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, we are going to close the public hearing and we'll come back to questions. Colleagues, time for questions. Counselor Afghan.
Mr. Olson, two questions. We received some of these letters this afternoon, so I glanced at them, but I haven't had time to cross-reference. Any of these letters would give you an aha, we need to go back and change something?
You know, I think one of the benefits of the way that the HPS is structured is that all of these details can kind of be incorporated at a later stage in the process. We don't have to have everything fully cooked by the time we're proposing it. We're proposing a roadmap. So we are able to account for these things, these suggestions that might not directly be in the HPS, you know, that we are able to think about those things. They'll be on the public record and they'll be incorporated when the actual implementation of that given strategy would take place. So, you know, things that we heard tonight are not really out of step with what we've heard previously, although, yeah, you know, I think there's going to be, you know, some sort of very sort of specific parameters that might be developed for something like the rezoning project or the code or amendments project that will be based on the input that we receive from folks. So, you know, we're, I think a lot of what we've heard is actionable, but should be considered and sort of vetted a little bit more publicly through the implementation process for the given strategy.
Okay. Thank you so much.
That was a long-winded response. Sorry.
That's perfect. That's what I wanted to hear, that we're not casting a stone, thou shall be, when the public has good ideas, especially like developers and builders. So that answered my question.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I think that has been, you know, generally true of the whole process where a lot of folks are generally supportive of what we're doing. They don't have strong opinions on which tax exemption we should be using necessarily, but when we come down to write, you know, the local criteria for the tax exemption, they're going to want to talk about specifically, what does that look like? How is this going to function? And I think folks really want to dive into those details when they have the chance.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Winland.
So this is the framework and all the different steps that you had. I know that different groups kind of prioritize things and they'll get on, so I'm not going to give the specifics, but I guess one of the first slides said that the state of Oregon is going to hold us accountable. I'm not quite sure what that means and what can they do if we fail and how would that be measured?
Well, you know, we've obviously identified the deficit for housing needs in the city. We have a check-in process with the state, so we will be evaluated at a midterm checkpoint, so three to four years into the six to eight year process, as well as, you know, the sort of, even in between, there's an annual reporting requirement as well. So we're going to be providing a lot of information to DLCD. You know, I think this would happen through the HPS process. There are other, you know, ways that the city could be held to account for various things through the Housing Accountability and Production Office, which is going to be newly created at the state. But when it comes to the HPS, really where that sort of check-in process does establish that sort of, you know, I guess accountability to a certain degree, I think we don't expect the state to be overly punitive when it comes to progress and sort of measuring that progress. And we do expect them to understand that there are, you know, things that get in the way of meeting a particular number and particularly quantifying all of this. But we do, you know, know that they could suggest that we take different approaches after the midterm checkpoint or they could provide us with very specific detailed, you know, sort of suggestions on what they think would work best. And I'm not sure exactly what this would look like, but I think they do have the ability to sort of force us to comply with certain things if it got to that point. I think the question is, you know, what is that point? How, you know, how much does it take to get to the point where you really have to get into the sort of enforcement track, I guess, as he might refer to it? So, you know, again, we don't expect that to happen, but there are processes set up for it with the whole, you know, multiple kind of reporting requirements and different check-in phases where we will be assessed sort of our, you know, how well are we doing? And how well are we achieving the implementation of these strategies?
Okay, because we still go back to the chicken or the egg part of this whole process. We don't have land to build anything. I mean, technically, we're built out. We can put in a number of policies and so on, but I think our biggest challenge is 2,000 units on 834 available lots does not add up. So it's a math problem. And I guess that's why I'm asking what will happen. I think a lot of the work that the housing production strategies have done are excellent. I mean, it's, there's a lot of great policy points in here. There's a lot of opportunities. I thought the, between all the different groups that have weighed in, everyone knows we need more housing for sure. We need more affordable housing, which is very difficult to get when you don't have any land to build it on. And so all I'm saying is, hey, I'm all for putting all this together and I appreciate the millions of hours that you put in. I mean, your children, you started this before children and now your children are already through college. No, I'm just kidding. No.
Seems like it, but not quite.
But it seems that, I just want us to set up the right expectations for this. I think we can fine tune. We've been wanting to do housing policy changes for, since I've been on council, to get a more streamlined, effective way. I think there's some things that we can get done in our code policies and our, not the building code, but the, our housing policies. But I just want to have the expectations that we just can't create things out of thin air. And I know that this city is a very highly productive, highly achievement-oriented group. We do that really well and I'm excited to get into more of the details for some of these things. Frankly, I would figure that we already have a fair housing policy already. And I don't know what that means, but I would certainly hope that we have fair housing policies in Lake Oswego. And I know it's probably a very huge bureaucratic book that we could all read and it probably won't get us anywhere closer to putting in better housing or anything else because I think we have some of that. But I just, the last point I want to make is that as we go into the housing production nitty-gritty and we do the goal setting, that we, we're not burdening ourselves with so much work that we can't necessarily get done, that we allocate our time appropriately for what is going to move our forward city, our city forward. I think there's a lot of opportunity that we have in this city to make things better. We've been doing that year after year and I just want to make sure that we put this in the right priority so that it's not taken 10 times the amount of time that we can get output. We should be doing on the things that we can actually get accomplished and that may not be housing production. So that's all I'm saying from that standpoint, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So, great work. I know we have to do it. You've been a stellar leader in this whole thing. Jessica, I know, has been a big supporter of this and you've done fabulous, but I just want to put our realistic hat on. So, anyway.
I will just kind of say quickly, you know, we do, you know, we are confident that we have the ability to meet our housing deficit within the city without, you know, annexing land or, you know, expanding the UGB or anything like that.
Matt has, Matt has his hand up.
I would just chime in really quickly to kind of echo what Eric said. And when the state talks about kind of holding you accountable, it's really what they're saying is they want to make sure that you are making progress on implementing the strategies that are identified in the Housing Production Strategy document as opposed to creating the number of units that your housing needs analysis says, you know, are needed in the city. It's less about, because they know frankly that you don't have unlimited supply of land and you don't build housing, but are you doing, are you undertaking the strategies that are identified in your Housing Production Strategy document? And since they're checking in with you midpoint, are you, have you started working on the ones that are identified as short, near-term or medium-term strategies? That's really kind of what they're, what they're going to be looking at is your progress and doing those things, not necessarily producing this, you know, addressing this deficit of units, but more undertaking the actions that the Housing Production Strategy describes related to those specific initiatives. So that's just kind of how I, what I've heard them say and what I've sort of seen written and all that. So I don't know if that helps, but I just wanted to chime in with that.
It does. And thanks to Matt and Kate for helping us get through all this stuff too. I want to mention them. They aren't in the room, they're in our little TVs. So, but thank you.
Well, I think that the task force with, you know, obviously with Eric's good guidance, Matt and Kate, and of course Jessica, Director Numanalu as well, did a good job kind of, I mean, we started with a huge list of so many different, you know, policies and they really sorted through to weed out things they didn't feel like would be a good use of the city's time or apply here. And then we, as a council, you know, further kind of filtered that list so that, I think we've distilled it down to a good set of policy actions that we can take that will have some tangible result. And it is good that it's playing out over time because the landscape is changing around us and especially on this funding front. And it's very difficult in a state like Oregon where cities are 100% dependent on the property tax revenue, to have one of the only tools, financial tools in our tool belt is just to give away the property taxes. You know, and it's not like that in every state. Other states have sales tax and they're, they're just, a small portion of their budget is reliant on property tax, so it's easy to give away the property tax, you know, and those kind of breaks. But it's a bigger, it's a bigger deal for us and I think we're hopeful here that, you know, we continue advocating at a regional level, state level and federal level for those resources to come in that may mitigate the need for Lake Oswego and all these other cities to have to continue abating property taxes to fund what is a dire need because we have obviously other needs in the community too that, to serve our residents that are also paid through property taxes. So the state puts us in a tricky bind there, you know, with that really being the only thing that we can offer. So I know, I'm hopeful that, especially right now with Metro and the supportive housing services measure, that in that way it gets reformatted, that becomes a source, a tool that we can use to preserve existing affordable housing and create new affordable housing or even offset some of the financial benefits we may provide to projects so we can make sure that we're able to provide the right level of service to those and all of our residents as well. And the phasing of these other, you know, like rezoning, we're talking about, you know, with the chamber, watching how things play out in the commercial environment. But this allows us to take a, you know, a surgical view and like Counselor Winland said, to make sure each year as we're planning out, what's our work plan going to be as we now implement the HPS? You know, what's, what's before us, whether it's going to be the foothills, you know, redevelopment and putting that plan together and how housing figures into it or some other, I'm especially excited about the rezoning because I think that does provide an opportunity for us to revitalize even certain areas of town that are kind of currently underutilized or could be better utilized, that could not only make them attractive places to live, they'd be even more than attractive for existing neighbors that live there and provide additional community benefits and opportunities for new, not just residential but commercial development, new businesses and whatnot as well, which would be just win-win-wins for the community. I do want to ask on the, on the SDC aspect of this, is there a reason why we're not, as I understand, we were going to look at all the middle housing types to begin with? Why is it just this cottage cluster?
Well, I think we didn't have that built into the fee structure yet, but Director Numanalu can speak to that a little more directly.
Okay.
Jessica Numanalu, Community Development Director. Yeah, we have, in our SDCs, we have categories for all the middle housing types except for cottage clusters. And so because of that, we've had to interpret how to apply the SDC to cottage clusters. And it's not very favorable for, so in order to have a more proportionate SDC for that, we need to adopt a new fee specific to cottage clusters. Unfortunately, a lot of the, the, gosh, I can't remember what the name of the manual is that they reference that in engineering. I know Director Rooney left.
Master fees.
Thank you. They, they don't have that category, but it is going to be updated this summer, so we expect to tackle that as part of the next master fee schedule update for cottage clusters.
So Jessica, remind the council, because for triplexes, quads, townhouses, there's already a lower SDC chart.
Right.
So remind them of what that is.
I do not.
I think it's a third. I think it's a third of the single family house.
But it's lower.
It is lower.
Substantially lower than a single-family home.
Okay. So I read in the report, it was only for developments, three units or more that we had a reduced rate and that for everything else, it was just the same rate on a per-unit basis?
We have, we have a rate for single-family, we have duplex and then we have triplex.
And they're not just, they're not just double, triplicate, the single?
No.
No, they're reduced?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's good. And then in the future, we'll look at the whole methodology, but that's a bigger project.
That'll be part of the TSP update.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think just, yeah, the cottage clusters SDC effort is kind of something that had already been, you know, that people were, you know, wanting to take on at some point. So we're just kind of throwing that in and saying, you know, we're actually already doing this to a certain extent and this will be the first phase, but, you know, the ultimate, you know, sort of reexamination of this would take place a little bit later.
Okay. That makes good sense. Matt, did you have?
Yeah, I will also note just briefly that this is also something that you'll be looking at as part of your park system master plan because we have an SDC methodology update built in to that project as well. So specifically for parks and recreation, we will also look at this. That methodology, I think, is a little different than some of the other methodologies that Eric and Jennifer mentioned. And so there's an opportunity there as well. So we didn't kind of highlight that as a near-term thing, but it actually is happening more in the near term. So you'll potentially make a little more progress on that strategy as it relates to park and recreation as well. And then, you know, I would say that, hey, if you tell DLCD we made even more progress on that one, that's not a bad thing. When you meet with them, you know, for your midterm review. But, but we are looking at that as part of the park system plan because I'm working on that one as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's good information. Yeah, I don't know if it's part of the fair, this fair housing work, but just as a note, it would be, I think it'd be helpful if we had some more just resources on our city website. You know, we don't have anything related to housing for, whether it's for landlord and tenant or just even resources, you know, and it would be good, I don't know, you know, if we could point people that might need housing assistance to the coordinated access, you know, with the county. Of course, some people are in Multnomah County too, so. But yeah, and the landlord-tenant law is so different between the counties as well. And I find like Portland has pretty good resources for their landlords and for their tenants and, you know, it's helpful. Well, so you don't.
We could do sort of an education light, I guess, component of the early phase.
A lot of good resources out there even just to link to it, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, did someone like to make a motion on this?
Move to tentatively approve Resolution 2436 and direct staff to return on November 19th, 2024 with a final version of the resolution, including findings and conclusion for LEU 240024.
All right. Motion made by Counselor Booth and seconded by Counselor Corrigan. Any further discussion?
Counselor-elect.
What?
Counselor-elect. No, I'm kidding. I'm joking.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. Much thanks to the Planning Department, Director Mr. Olson and the task force. Multiple years, great work.
Yes.
We can't wait to update it.
Oh, yeah.
It's been, it's been a long process, but it's not going to go away anytime soon. But thank you so much.
And thank you, Matt, Kate.
Thank you all.
How many years till retirement? No, just kidding. No, good.
All right. Okay, information from counsel. Oh, okay. Counselor Corrigan.
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know that the South Shore.
Your mind.
Yeah, speaking of that. I got to scoot up. So they kicked off with a tour of the South Shore Fire Station and everybody's pretty familiar with that now. The next meeting will be November 14th and it's going to be in the Maintenance Center, so it will be recorded for anybody who's interested in watching.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Afghan.
A couple of updates. The DEI Diversity Inclusion Team is doing a great job. The last couple meetings, they have been. The last couple meetings, they have been looking at a report that was done by Coalition of Communities of Color. It's a research justice study and this is cultivating belonging in Clackamas County. And there's like 263 pages of report, very informative information and they're doing a great job going into it and seeing how it applies to Lake Oswego and how we can address that. Second item is Counselor Corrigan and Counselor Mabup and I attended Sixth Annual Lake Oswego Urban Forest Summit. And it was a great summit and there were two recognition that came up that I wanted to share with you, my colleagues. One was that the coordinator were extremely appreciative for the city wanting to enable this summit. And especially when they were in a crunch to find a place large enough for about a hundred people who had RSVP. And Ms. Linder jumped in and offered to help however the city could in order to make this summit come together. So your name came up, so thank you so much for enabling what community wants to do and they have an interest in doing it and we as the city are enabling them. The second recognition goes to Director Numanalu. Not only she was awesome at presenting and fielding question, and I think all the three counselors agreed on that, but also the coordinators after the meeting, they found us and wanted to make sure she was recognized in not only being so familiar with the plan, supporting it, and also being very neutral and transparent in tough questions that came up. So City Manager, she did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Some regional updates. At C4, we talked about this, Metro's doing a limited transit study. This is looking at some of the, you know, micro-mobility and then other non-fixed route transit things that we talk about. This gets talked about a lot, of course, and trying to fund it is a different story, but at least they're taking a look at this. So we continue to reiterate the need, the alternative transit needs that are available in, in, in the more suburban communities. We also got an update on the Sunrise Corridor project, which is out, you know, in Clackamas County, near Happy Valley there, been talked about for a long time. They're kind of in a planning phase. That is one of the projects for some additional planning dollars that Clackamas County has submitted as one of our, one of two Rafa Step One projects. And those are going through eligibility right now, but that, that Sunrise Corridor, it's an interesting area with some, it's a real mix of uses out there. Finally, it's like a lot of commercial, there's a lot of, lot of commercial businesses, big, you know, big manufacturing warehouses, but then there's also residential right there too and a lot of kind of a trailer park developments and things out there. And so it's a lot of transportation improvements that are needed. It, it does seem kind of like an isolated, be a difficult place to live. Yeah, there's 14,000 people that live out, that work out there, yeah, and another 7,600 residents, yeah, five in five mobile home parks. And then at JPAC, you know, I feel like ever since I've been elected official, they've been talking about the Interstate Bridge.
It'd be, yeah.
Okay. So anyway, they gave us an update, like the, you know, on the Interstate Bridge, which, you know, I mean, some of the highlights here, they have their light rail extension from the Expo Center to Evergreen Boulevard is going to have new light rail stations as an aspect. They're, they're doing improvements to seven different interchanges, seven interchanges as a part of the bridge. Replace, obviously, they're replacing the bridge over the main and then stem of the river and then there, they're, they're still not sure how they're going to pay for it. They're thinking the tolling, variable rate tolling. What I was most surprised about though is they don't yet know the design of the span of the bridge or is it going to be like this? Is it going to be stacked? Is it going to be? They have no idea, which I couldn't believe after all this time.
This is why.
I mean, I was like, when do they stop designing? They're still looking at options.
It was three billion.
The main thing is that we have these two projects.
I actually think they're in the middle of the EIS, which is why they're still designing. They have to leave all of the alternatives open to make sure they all get a complete environmental review.
Yes. So ongoing, very, but the cost just keeps, you know, going up. So between the Interstate Bridge and the other big project, which is the Rose Quarter, which I think everyone heard did not get the $750 million grant they wanted to get from the federal government. Those are massive projects and, you know, they'll factor into this, the state's conversation around funding, but they both have large gaps of, to fund. And Rose Quarter did get a $450 million gap, which, which was for the cap, but that's just partial, the cap to reconnect the neighborhood over the freeway and it doesn't pay for any of the actual project. And I think people read that there's been a lot of money spent on that project and yet no, nothing, you know, no.
Welcome to Oregon.
No plan. Yeah, so it is very, very concerning. But, I mean, the bridge, these things are needed, but of course we continue, like as we talk about regional transportation and the statewide plan that we've got to ensure, I mean, these are big projects, but we also need to ensure funding for our local, our local projects and throughout the state. For most Oregonians, they do not drive on the Interstate Bridge, you know, the vast majority of them. If you don't live in the metro region, you're not even going to use the Rose Quarter.
But they use stuff that comes over the bridge.
They use stuff, so it's important, yeah.
So it's kind of one of those things that, you know, it's a.
But it's hard to spend all of our money on two, you know, projects. So, yeah, yeah. That's what I have, that rosy news.
Just a quick update on parks and rec. Plan 2040 is underway and it's getting very close, so it will be seen our eyes soon and I think you'll like, for the most part, everything in it. It's pretty massive. I mean, it's a big plan as far as not necessarily like a million projects, but a lot of opportunities for us to consider over the next fifteen, twenty years.
Yeah. It's great. Thank you. City Manager.
I just have a, I, I think I sent you all my Friday email, a copy of a request from the National League of Cities that we, we sign on to, a request to increase appropriations for disaster assistance. And we've had some in the last year and I think the hurricanes that have happened this year have more than stretched the communities that are affected. I'm really glad to not be in Asheville, North Carolina. So I, I mean, I recommend that you do sign on, but I wanted to get your feedback before we did.
We need to say yes.
I just, yeah, I just, yeah, okay, great.
Do we have to public notice that? Just kidding.
Well, we just did. We just did. And then just a reminder that next Monday is Veterans Day and so library, city offices will be closed, but also there'll be the event in, at the Veterans Memorial at Foothills Park.
Oh.
Yes.
Getting invited today?
At the.
Okay. All right. Happy Election Day. We're adjourned. Did you get invited to the Veterans?
Oh.
Yeah, me neither.